All right, are we good to go? All right then. Good evening, everyone. It is 6:01 and I call the City Council Regular Meeting of November 19th. Mayor Green.
Here.
Councilmember Best.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
And Councilmember Hill.
Isaiah.
You have muted and spoke.
Sorry. Sorry, can you hear me?
Can you try again? We didn't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
I think it's fine now.
Can you hear me now? Hello? 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 Hello?
Tim, can you hear us now?
I, I can hear you. Not as good as I usually can, but I can hear you now. Can you hear me?
Much better, thank you.
Is there online issues to anyone else?
Is anyone else online having difficulty hearing council?
I can hear you just fine. This is Hillary.
This is, this is Greg. You're, you're loud and clear.
Stop with that. Thank you. All right, thank you very much. If you'd all join me, please, for the optional pledge of allegiance or a little silence. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Okay, thank you. Let's move on to approval of the agenda. We have a very intimidating looking agenda that I anticipate will go very smoothly. So please don't add anything to it, but I would entertain a motion to approve it. As soon as to approve the agenda.
Seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all in favor. Let's move on to public comments for items not on the agenda. There's a few people here. Let's just take a raise of hands of anyone who would like to offer comment for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone online who would like to offer public comment for items not on the agenda? Tiffany, did you want to say something?
Hold on. Where am I? Where am I? No, I'm here for Jane.
Okay. Great, thank you. All right, see no public comment. This just feels really unusual. Let's just move on to presentation, the, for our first presentation prior to an executive session. This is a presentation from PB Swims regarding their citizens initiative. Jane, please.
Thank you. I'm Jane Harrison from PB Swims, live at 172 Rafferty. And I sent out a request to the council by email last night, and the request has changed just a little bit because I was jumping the gun. And so I'm gonna bring you on this since it was changed. The sales tax the voters just approved is drowning in state government red tape and will not be implemented if action isn't taken. The best course of action recommended to PB Swims is for the city to do everything necessary and instruct staff to prepare to file a declaratory judgment action. This is in the event the Department of Revenue, who I'll refer to as the DOR, gives a final denial of enforcing the voter approved tax. A declaratory, it's hard to say, a declaratory. The declaratory judgment action is a legal procedure that allows a court to define the rights, obligations, and responsibilities of parties involved in a potential or actual legal dispute. A declaratory judgment is a lawsuit and it resolves the disagreement on the statutory interpretation issue. A declaratory judgment is binding and doesn't order a party to take any action or pay any damages. PB Swims followed state statutes and met deadlines creating and circulating the petition. City staff followed state statutes approving the petition, ensuring signatures were sufficient, and meeting all deadlines to get the citizens initiative on the ballot. Thank you, City Council, for approving that emergency order before the election. City Attorney Brown proposed this in an effort to bridge the gap between the citizens petition ordinance and the language the state requires in an ordinance. Despite the city attorneys and PB Swims attorneys agreeable plan, the effort was reportedly insufficient and did not satisfy the DOR's concerns. The DOR has informed us that if concerns were not resolved before the election, their ability to begin collecting the tax would need delay. We at PB Swims are not in a panic. And not in a fight with the DOR. An analogy is someone in distress and over their head in water. Panicking or fighting the lifeguard makes the rescue more difficult. We at PB Swims are seeking a solution and do not want to make the process more difficult. A declaratory judgment can save time, money, and stress by resolving this legal uncertainty. We respectfully ask you, the City Council, to prepare to file a declaratory judgment action and defend the enforceability of the vote your citizens initiated. Article two, Title 29 explicitly states that nothing in this article shall preclude the initiation of a sales or use tax proposal by the registered electors of any incorporated town or city pursuant to Section 31-11-104 CRS. Only the tax proposal must be submitted to voters, not the full contents of the sales tax ordinance. This sales tax is being adopted pursuant to Section 31-11-104 CRS, which Article two explicitly allows. Thank you very much for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you, Jane. Are there any questions for Jane?
All right, so Jane, what changed or what, what is differently said than you may know?
Oh, so I said, get right down and file a declaratory.
Yeah, the DJ.
Yeah. But Lance Ingalls, who is PB Swims attorney, he says that since Sarah Bushman, Deputy Clerk Sarah Bushman, is already working on giving the state requested documentation that they asked for. By November 30th, the state contacted Clerk Bushman, and so she's getting that together and sending it to them. So we don't have final word on it yet, I don't think. That it's not acceptable what we've done at this point. So we're waiting for final word.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I would just like to thank them for using drowning in percent and the pool analogy on page two. A lot of us are over our heads. We're gonna, we're gonna slow.
Oh my God, I cannot get you to miss him. I know that, that this is, this is a very passionate issue for many. Do, is there anyone who would like to make a brief, please? I will hold you to two minutes of public comment before we proceed into executive session. Are you just here to, you know, show phys?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone online would like to give brief public comment regarding this issue before we proceed to executive session? Great, thank you. At this time, I'm actually, I'm volunteering you. Cisco, to to move into executive session when that is your show.
To be an honor.
I, I, before though, I would like to, normally when we go into executive session, we take counsel, we take our city administrator, we take our city attorney. I would like to additionally note that I'm inviting our finance director to this executive session as she has pertinent and relate, you know, she'll be part of this whole issue.
And our, and our deputy city clerk does that meeting.
And our deputy city clerk who does the meeting, thank you.
Is there a motion to go into? Oh, you already did that?
So who? You are continuing.
Oh, thank you.
I will withhold an executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-4024B for a conference with the city's attorney to receive legal advice regarding implementation of the citizens initiative.
Move now, that seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there opposed?
He said aye.
Did he? Okay. All right then, since there are more of you than there are of us, we will proceed upstairs for executive session and we'll be back as soon as. Okay, the time is now 6:58 and the executive session has been concluded. If any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included, excuse me, in the motion to go into the executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, please state your concerns now for the record. Hearing none, let us proceed with our regular meeting. Council would like to direct staff to continue and complete submitting the requested documents to the Department of Revenue. And we will see what they say on November 30th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Jane, love to sit down with you sometime this week. No, I mean you, Jane. Also. All right, I've totally forgotten where we are. We are at the consent agenda. If, if no one has any concerns, or wants to pull anything from the consent agenda, I would entertain a motion.
Yes, we need to approve. Move now, seconds.
All in favor? Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, well, we're in favor. Let's go on now. The, the first thing on our presentations and discussions is actually a proclamation declaring Community Gibbs Day. This is for our records that I will read. I will remind everyone that there is a celebration of and proclamation of Community Gibbs Day that I will do with our partners at the Board of County Commissioners this Thursday between three and five. It's gonna be a little shindig here at City Hall, so y'all should come. I think there'll be snacks. Okay, so here's our proclamation. This is a proclamation of the city of Leadville, Colorado, supporting Colorado Gibbs Day. Whereas Colorado Gibbs Foundation is committed to elevating donors and nonprofits across Colorado through both Colorado Gibbs Day and year-round fundraising on Colorado Gives 365. And whereas donors have the freedom to choose the causes that matter to them the most and collaborate with incredible nonprofits that are tirelessly working to make good happen in Colorado. And whereas Colorado Gibbs Day is a celebration of giving in Colorado, supporting more than 3,400 local nonprofits. And whereas Colorado Gibbs Day is Tuesday, December 10th, 2024, and early giving for Colorado Gibbs Day began November 1st, 2024. And whereas since its beginning in 2010, Colorado Gibbs Day has raised $470 million for Colorado nonprofits who help our communities thrive. And whereas Lake County Gives is a collaboration of Lake County nonprofits with the Lake County Community Fund. And together, we are on a mission to enhance the quality of life in our community by strengthening collaboration, fundraising capacity, and awareness of the nonprofits in Lake County. And whereas it sometimes only takes a little to make a big impact to create good. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Dana Green, Mayor of Leadville, Colorado, do hereby proclaim our support of Colorado Gibbs Day in December 10th, 2024, and to recognize the positive impact it makes in our community. So I plan to see you all Thursday, 23 to 5 in these chambers. Let's move on now. We have a pair of presentations. The first one is from McKinstry regarding the community center. Captain, please come up. What I'm going to request normally, we've limited presentations to about 10 minutes to make sure we have ample time to field questions from council.
Yes. And while they are getting set up, just wanted to let the City Council know that our project manager, Lauren Barrett, would normally be here to teach us a class tonight. She did send you all an email update with some additional information. There was a very productive meeting with school district and county about this project and other ideas in her update, so she just apologized to put it in her in Thursday.
I've got four more. Who should we?
And then can you guys share one down there? We share one up here.
Well, you ready?
Yes.
Well, hello. So good to be here in person and I guess first and foremost, I want to thank all of your great hosting and allow us to commit to this. Next slide, please. So my name is Brian Firestone. I'm an accounting manager with McKinstry. And why is this project this near and dear to my heart is I grew up in Rockville. I'm six generations from Rockville County. And when I was a boy, I spent many days in community centers. I'll tell you, and it was a great way to connect with the community. So it's really important for, for me to see this through and also as a boy, I spent five years all on up here in the, and I came up here and fishing and keep lots of camping. And my two teenage daughters, I come up all the time now, so great to be part of it. And then I want to introduce Will Cheever, who is from Oregon. But he was, he's here at our holding office as well. He is our architect. We've got a whole team of architects, but he's leading this project for us. And then I want to introduce Ty. And Ty and I kind of grew up together. He grew up in Lamar, Colorado. So a couple, a couple natives here. Thank you. Next slide, please. So real quick, who's McKinstry? You guys can look at this later, but we're a multi-disciplinary design and construction firm. We're founded in 1960, we're privately held, and we primarily do business in the public sector. So municipalities, schools, hospitals, and universities. Next slide, please. And we'll turn that over. Will?
Yeah. Thanks, Will Cheever. Our thanks. And we're really excited about the opportunity for this project. Really think this is gonna be a real special addition to this community. Art, design team has over 75 combined years of working on public and public-facing projects for variety of clients that Brian mentioned, in addition to private developers. Our portfolio includes things like gymnasiums, clubhouses, fitness rooms, worker spaces, or working spaces, dog wash. Anyway, we are very excited about the possibilities for this particular project. As we jump into this, our, our process is really gonna be to understand what the community wants, community needs, and how we can turn that into a reality. You guys have a really great start. I really give a lot of credit to Lauren and Lori, the process that they've gone through to start the conversations, working with the community. And then working with the University of Colorado's UTAD program, which I think is a fantastic opportunity for taking some of those conversations and turning those into ideas and visualizations. And in fact, the big question costing for you guys is really a fantastic step. So us coming in, you know, we're just gonna build on that work that's already been done. We're gonna further those conversations. We're gonna work with community members, with staff, with council to turn those conversations and the ideas into a real project. This building that we're talking about really has some fantastic bones, and so the reason that we're really excited about it. The ways they're together, the configuration of the spaces, really lend themselves to a multipurpose facility. So the, the larger gym, the library space, the classroom spaces, there's just a rich amount of opportunity there that we're excited about. Additionally, the building has fantastic ability to be separated out for revenue generation, possibility of renting the space while still having the rest of the building operate for other, other uses and other tenants. And that's just the function of how buildings are put together. And then additionally to that, because the building is configured in the way that it is, you can have some different uses happening at the same time. You can have rental spaces, but you can have senior activities in one space, as you can have teen activities happening in another space. You know, the youth activities happening in this space, really fantastic space. And we're also just really enamored with the location, so close to downtown, so close to other cultural centers of the city. And then our fantastic view overlooking the mountains. We are also really excited about the, the creating dynamic, active, and vigorous spaces for this building. But it's more than just being, it's making it a dynamic and vibrant place for the community. And that's really what we're excited about. And we're really anxious to get started making that a reality. Get a next slide, please. So to make this a reality, McKinstry has developed a five-step turnkey approach. And the idea here is that when we take a project from the initial ideation, all the way through it, design iteration, funding, construction documents, construction, and commissioning and beyond. So for design exploration, we pulled together a team of designers, architectural. We're gonna have a survey put together. We have a civil engineer that we've worked with that we're really excited about. We have a landscape architect, a structural MEP. We're gonna take these ideas that have been percolating, that we're making real to the design iteration, and we're gonna work with those consultants to put together a design package, a schematic design package that you will have to be able to talk to the committee, to the committee about, or to the council about, and to the community about. At the same time we're doing that, Ty, who's on our construction team, we're gonna be working with him and our cost estimators to make smart choices about where those, where dollars could be spent, because everything that we decide to do has a real-world impact, a real, real world cost. So as we're working through that, one of the key parts about that is that we can come together and figure out how do we target payment this project. McKinstry's had a lot of success working with DOLA and other grant, grant issuing agencies. And what we're gonna do is, as part of this design exploration process, we're gonna have a design package for you guys. We're gonna have a cost estimate for you guys, and we're also gonna target grants that we should go for. Once we've gone through that process, then phase two is we're gonna go after those grants. We're gonna help you guys put together the applications. We're gonna help you guys meet and present for various, for DOLA or other agencies to try to win those. And McKinstry has been really successful at getting grants with our partners, DOLA and other agencies. And to phase three, which is the construction and development phase, the construction document and development phase. We're gonna take the design ideas and the funding that we received, we're gonna refine the scope, we're gonna put together construction drawings, which means it will have drawings that you can put out to bid, drawings that you can put into the city for design review. So we can move on to that next, that next phase. And while we're doing that, Ty, again, is gonna be working hand in hand with our group, the design group, to, to get us to the next phase, which would be four, and then by an alternative title with that.
Yeah, I mean, my, my whole job here, right? You know, construction is where the rubber meets the road, so my team to come in here and hold these guys accountable on that design side of things for you guys. So really a collaborative partnership at the end of the day. But the value, I think you'll see with our turnkey approach, is having our constructions being involved early, even now, being here now, involving this project all the way through that, after the phase one, phase two, and phase three, to help pull this thing together. Versus kind of that design-to-build approach, right? Where your construction folks are probably coming in a little bit later at that time.
Great. And then Brian, you talked a little more about how we work with plumbing.
So we have internal team that we put together many years ago because we found that there was such a great need from the public sector. Swindling staff, dwindling monies out there, and we found it in almost every sector, especially in rural, rural Colorado. Just don't have the people to go out there and do all that research and really be tied to, like, for instance, here in Colorado, the Colorado Energy Office. So we've got a team that looks at all the federal side things, so Department of Energy, IRA, ITC type of operates, and then we've got, the same team looks at this all-state grants. So it's really powerful because we keep our, come on that every week, because that grant cycle changes every single week. And then, of course, we work with the local utilities, and we'll pull out any rebates from them. We work with all the utilities throughout the state, and then we'll put together a financing methodology for you. Next slide, please. And I would say, before we get into this, I just want to let you know that Lauren's done a great job. I looked at some of her work and some of her power points, and she, now she's a rock star. She's one of those gals that goes out there and does all that research, and she does go out there and works hard to find. So we're excited to work with her as well. So this is an eye chart, right? This is not for you to read, but this is what we use internally to track all of our state grants through the Colorado Energy Office or any other sources throughout the, throughout Colorado. We will track that in the ocean. You can kind of see on there, I think this is an older iteration, but you can kind of see some of the municipalities and different projects out there that we look at. I would say in the community space, we are working with about 40 other municipalities throughout the state in this process, this turnkey process that we're talking to you about today. Next slide, please. Now, who is back a little bit? To Will?
Yeah. So, why McKinstry? We actually specialize in working on these multi-disciplinary design teams. We have in-house mechanical, electrical, structural, plumbing. We partner with a variety of other groups. And then we also partner internally with our construction and our funding group. And the idea is that instead of having these kind of adversarial relationships, we're really trying to work together. Everyone's rolling in the same direction to make sure that we're accomplishing what, what our clients, the communities, want to accomplish. As we mentioned before, we've had a lot of success with the funding through, through the state and other agencies and other opportunities. And that funding piece, to me, really is the key to this, to an opportunity like this, is figuring out how we maximize what the community is providing from a financial standpoint. And then maximizing what the opportunities are in the state and other, other groups. And that funding really is, I think, the linchpin, and really ties the whole turnkey process together. So when we're talking about ideas, design, we're thinking about costs, and how do we start paying for this items? Then we go out and figure out how we actually funded this different funding, then we're gonna take that funding and try to execute that funding through our construction drawings and our construction process, all the way through to our turnkey, or to our, our handover process. And then just to reiterate, this is a comprehensive approach, and this is an integrated approach, right? We don't, we're not operating here individually. This is about creating something for you guys. You know, we certainly would love to come up when it's done and enjoy it, but really, this is for you guys. And so it's, it's an integrated approach, a collaborative approach, and like I said, we're very, very excited about being able to present this to you guys today.
Yeah, I'll say one more thing, just as a great quick example. We're in Oak County. Will was the, the architect on that. Started with nothing, zero dollars, and it's well over 90. And I believe 95% of that was funded through, through state money, through grant cycles. And I believe ninety-five percent of that was funded through, through state money, through grant cycles.
And we're happy to show you more. We appreciate it too. Any last slide? Turn it over. Just to thank you for letting us work with you guys on this, present this and turn over your question, Jeff.
Thank you, gentlemen. Other questions for McKinstry?
One question about funding. I think I understand how supportive and helpful we want to be with the capital cost. During phase two, you help us think through what sort of revenue might be generated through the operation and maintenance of the facility?
Yeah. And that's the, that's the beauty of making sure that we're not siloed. So typical construction project is the honorable hire of design, design, that firm goes out and does the design. And then boom, that first done. And then the rest of everyone else down the road, the development, construction has to be informed by that. And so the reason why we've put it all together is because we can talk to movement. And we can have inputs, like Pi was talking about earlier, we have input, we're able to put together exactly what that cost is.
And we also, we didn't include in this proposal, but we have worked with economic advisor in the past. Who's been able to help put, put plans together and strategy together for a facility that's operating to generate revenue. So like for this project, you know, if you're renting out the gymnasium portion of the building. They can help together kind of what that might look like and how that might function. I think this building, as I mentioned, really does have some great opportunity for, for that, given the gym space, which is. Large, you know, I can see receptions or whatnot being held there. And so that we have a group that we can bring in, that can really help kind of explain some of that stuff and communicate to you that. We could do that either in phase one or in phase two, depending on how that.
Yeah. And I'll also say that we typically do a cash flow, cash flow analysis. And in that actual analysis, it'll show you all the different areas that are gonna cost money. And we'll break it down for you on how much grant or rebates are going to be to that. We'll break it down to if you want, you know, net present value, I R R. We have the capability to do all of those things in-house.
And one more question, did you all work with the school district or am I misremembering that our local school district?
Oh, so I've been with McKinstry for six years. I probably, so our regional headquarters is in Golden, Colorado. We've been there for about almost nineteen years. DJ, let me introduce Mr. DJ. He's our regional director. Do you recall that project?
I believe I did, but it's been a while. It's been, it's been since I've been in McKinstry. But I remember when I first started, there was a poster about some projects up here that we did early on.
I know Jordan Bitteroff was talking to the school districts recently. That's kind of how we got plugged in.
That's exactly how we got introduced to you. Dan got, we introduced us, he was up here working on the school district.
Yeah. Gotcha. Yeah, yeah. And again, like we, so we're in K twelve market, we're in, you know, heavily in the media market, especially in rural. The rural communities all over the state. And so it's, it's wonderful to be here. There was one thing though, that we talked about that we typically do in what we call an investment grade audit. And an entry force contract. Those are just contract methodologies through the state of Colorado. So we know that what you all are trying to determine today is, you know, hey, are we gonna approve this, this budget that's put together? And our part of that was fifty thousand dollars. Typically, whenever we go do any study phase on the front end, we never target for that. We don't, we don't say you have to pay that right now. We roll that over into construction. So for instance, when we go to a big audit of a school district, or we go do a big audit of a university. And I'd say it's three hundred fifty thousand dollars worth of our work. We will, we will sign a contract with you. And in that contract that says, hey, for whatever reason, if you decide to not move forward. Then at that time you cut and check. But by signing that contract, you've agreed, we want to continue moving, moving us up down the line. Did you have?
I, I just might add that, you know, just listening to the presentation and then hearing your question about operations and maintenance costs. Over the nineteen years that we've been in business in Colorado, I think we've done about three hundred million dollar with the projects. Ninety-five percent of which was funded by operations and maintenance savings that we guaranteed that then was able to fund projects. So. It's, it's one hundred percent in our DNA that, that is how we would analyze this project to make sure that the budget was set forward. And the revenue generated so that this thing will be sustainable moving into the future. That's one hundred percent our idea.
Yeah, for instance, this building that we're in right now, this is exactly in terms of the retrofit scenario. This is exactly what we do and in most places. Any other questions?
Other questions for the McKinstry team?
Given, given the amount of work that Miss Faris has already done with the community engagement, does that change the amount of work that? You, does that reduce the amount of community engagement work that you would do normally? Like this, is that usually in your script of work?
Sorry, we, yes, the answer is yes. So we're set up to kind of get rolling. We have included though in our, in our fees, time for additional communication, either with council or with the community. Just as we, there's a lot of really great ideas. And as those start to come together and become real. We just want to make sure that everyone knows what's going on and is, is bought into it. It's a, it's a big project. It's right downtown. So everyone's gonna see it. So we want to make sure that everyone can be aware of it, bought in and excited about it. So we'll have, we'll have that as part of our, our initial phase. We'll have opportunities to discuss whether that's a meeting here or something over there. We have opportunities for that. And then we'll be providing as part of our design package, plans, site plans, rendering, programmatic information. So that we can be digested by, by the community.
Yeah. And, and really utilizing us as a tool in a collaborative nature because we do know that this one was a doozy. Like there's, we, we understand that some of the community is not bored at all. And some of the community is. So, and we've been in those scenarios before. So. We're happy to be in that scenario for you guys. And you guys in this.
I would say from my collaborative perspective, right? Our job here is to support you guys and Lauren, whatever way you need on those community engagements, wherever that is. So whatever that looks like as much or maybe as little, maybe it's just providing the stuff. Maybe it's coming up here and doing some, some community needs as things get moving. So I would say we support that and, and let you kind of guide us or Lauren guides us in that.
Would you say that in terms of the assistance or, you know, the guidance in seeking public funding? That that in covers, is more directed towards the latter phases like three, four and five? Is that a fair assumption there? So looking at the, the proposed fees?
We, we honestly need to look at it at every base, right? Because there's a cost to do the business almost at every phase. The, the difference is on this was we're not sitting here with the, right? You're, we're passing the area over to the, the development and the construction base.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for McKinstry team? Thank you so much, gentlemen. Thank you for making the trip up here.
I'll say this, I was the last one to leave the front range, the first one to get here.
That is just project solution right there.
Well, thank you again very much. Let's move on to a presentation from theater production. I don't know if we have.
We are here online. Hello, everyone. Can you hear us okay in the room?
Yes, we can.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you for your patience and having us join remotely this evening. My name is Jenna Buhler. I'm the head of strategy and operations for theater projects, joined by Jim Neesel as well. We are actually in our New York office today. We are both based in Colorado. However, this is our annual retreat where our company gets together and turns the world off for three days. We escaped from dinner tonight and sort of come join you. So otherwise we would have definitely been there in person. We're gonna go ahead and share a screen just to sort of talk you through a couple of points. And then we can go through some Q and A here as well. So as we get started, just want to give you a little bit of basis and introduction. When we've been talking with Lauren and Lori, we've sort of looked at a different approach to thinking about this project. So I want to give you a little basis of understanding of those pieces. Quickly about me, as we start this off, so I would be the principal in charge of this project. I live over the hill in Carbondale. I've been in Colorado since two thousand eight. I lived in Vail. I was the venue director at the Vilar Performing Arts Center and a member of the Vail Valley Foundation team. I was also running the Wheeler Opera House over in Edison. I'm currently a proud board member of the Tabor Opera House as well. And have spent a lot of time in the region really thinking about what this means to live and work in these mountain communities that surround us. The work that I do across the country is helping people to come up with creative solutions. To the thought of gathering together in space and what does that mean? So even though we call ourselves theater projects, we really talk about this being the human element. And the human condition of what brings us together. And that can be everything from gathering around a campfire or going into the Tabor to see a show. And sort of everything in between, especially looking at what it means to have entertainment events and maker spaces all coming together. So that's a little basis of what brings me here to the table this evening. And I'll let Jim introduce himself for you all quickly too.
I'm Jim Neesel. I'm the head of the Denver Office for Theater Projects. And what I bring to the, to the team to back Jenna's side up is the nuts and bolts, if you will, right? So the, are the spaces gonna work for the intended use? And what is the cost for that renovation? What are the, what are the thoughts around what needs to be done? And what does that equipment cost? What does that equipment fit out look like? What is a maker space? How big does it need to be? Are there ways to phase it? What kind of equipment goes into it, right? What's an event space? What's that gonna need to support the events? And what, what does that mean for the building and what needs to be done with, with, with the building? So the planning and the phasing and then the equipment side of things.
Jenna? Thank you, Jim. And also here, not joining us today, she is just fresh back from maternity leave. But our colleague, Ashley Keen, who worked with us on the Tabor Business Plan Project a few years ago. Will also be joining us to do business analysis. She comes from the Mesa Art Center, really focused on events as well as maker spaces and education spaces as well. Finding those safe spaces for youth in Mesa, Arizona. So you may be continuing to ask, what does this mean? What is the theater project's way of coming across this? And, and why would theater come intersect into a space such as this? We really start our process thinking about rightsizing, making something sustainable and making it accessible. We always come together in a way that can be quality based off of the spaces that we design. But the theater project ethos is really that we take a step back and we become your healthy skeptics in the room. We truly ask you the questions at the beginning, building off of Lauren's fantastic work of establishing a vision. And we come in saying, what's the why? Why is this right for Leadville today? Who is going to pay for this long term? Who is going to operate it? Who is going to use the space? And how do they need to operate in that space? And then what does the building need to do to support that? So the proposal that we put together for you is really based off of our history across North America, but as well as in a lot of projects in Colorado. Where we want to make sure that the plan moving forward is sustainable for the community for years to come. When we're looking at buildings such as this, we're making a fifty-year decision and making sure that we are coming up with a fit. For the community today, but the community of tomorrow. So that as municipal space, no one's coming back in ten years with their hands open saying, we can't afford to keep these doors open. Let's make sure that that long-term way of operating is what makes sense before we dive into. Breaking down walls and remodeling and getting all the things together. We really say, let's slow down. Let's think about what this is. Let's plan upfront. Let's make sure this is the right move and then let's find a way to continue that forward, especially in a lot of phased elements. So what we do is a lot of, again, user-centric operational focus. So this comes down to what are the different opportunities for who will be using the spaces? And then who is potentially the best operator for that space? As we've gone through this process, Leadville does not have a big history of owning and operating buildings to this level with culture. And with gathering and with education. So the question becomes, who would operate it? Who are long-term tenants? What do they need from the space? How do we start thinking about how they would use it, what the building needs to be designed for? And then where the revenue can come from. We start breaking up the building into revenue generating spaces. We start thinking about phasing in that way as well. So could the top level be activated pretty quickly into maker space? Bringing in the dance school so that they can have their dance studio space. While then eventually working into the event space and that renovation there. And a lot of this comes down to these early prioritization conversations that we're going to have with the community. With leadership from city council, with Lauren and Lori, and really developing, what is the best plan to move this forward? And what are those operational, community, social and price impact long-term? Really what this comes down to is this idea of gathering together. And what does that mean? How does this overlap? How do we bring that together? And then what are the right pieces of infrastructure that support that? The beautiful thing about community centers is that how we're using this space when it first opens. Is usually not how the space is used five years, ten years down the road. It's something that evolves. So we need to think about the building living and breathing. With the evolution of creation and the evolution of people coming together. So that you're not stuck in a space that doesn't work for people five years down the road. And so what that really means as well is understanding what it means to be doing this in the Rocky Mountains. What does this mean to be doing it in a community like Leadville that is growing? And then balancing out a lot of different research models of how other communities are doing this. Learning from that, guiding that through evolving the concept. We believe in a lot of constant iteration that really gets us down to this realistic solution. The solution that's right for Leadville, that's not necessarily right for any other community. But something that's going to be modeled for your community and then moves that forward in a sustainable way. Again, operational focus first. So a lot of what we started talking about with Lauren and Lori is establishing guiding questions. This is what would lead our initial feasibility study. And for us, the feasibility study is let's help you to decide if this is a go, no-go situation. There's gonna be a lot of priorities and a lot of questions that come up in terms of funding, funding sources, cost of construction, cost of deal. You know, where are all the pieces that are coming in and what we have today? And is this the right time? And is this the right price to move that forward? So really these questions change over time and they continue to lead us in terms of what's the right fit that meets these vision and goals. So we want to build off of the work that Lauren has already started, start asking questions, start developing that a little bit more. I sort of see it as the onion. We keep keeling back the onion to make sure we get down to a space. That we understand then how is it going to be activated and what's the greater community benefit? That idea of community benefit then continues to lead the process of where the walls go. What's the infrastructure? What's the necessary support in the first few years? And how do we set that up for success? That then comes into a little bit of the nuts and bolts. We always have to answer the question of how much is this gonna cost? What does this look like? So with Jim and his team of planners, with our visualization experts, as well as our cost consultants. We come down with getting a project cost of your construction cost, your soft cost, everything else that goes on top of that. To ask the question back, is this project feasible for this cost? Do these priorities match with the cost where the community is going to be? And then are there funding sources available that can match them? Sometimes we'll get to a point in the process and the answer will be no, this is too much for us. We cannot afford the very large shopping part of what we've put together. So now let's start to pare it back and make sure we understand what is the community benefit? How does that lead? How does that become initial first step? Sometimes we see multi-phase over ten, fifteen years, really starting to think and look at that. The, the site and the parcel, excuse me, the parcel has great opportunity for eventual growth and expansion. So really thinking about that as well. The last piece of this is those operational costs and structure. This isn't just about the HVAC and the insurance and what it costs to keep the doors open. But what are the other costs? What are the programming costs, the cost of educators, the cost of the equipment that every three to five years needs to get replaced? Who is the operator going to be? And how do they operate this space without subsidy coming from the city? Where does the rest of the money come from? It comes from the community. Let's make sure this is right and that this isn't gonna impact anything else. And that we're creating something that complements what Leadville already has and then continue to move that forward. So again, healthy skepticism in the room. We continue asking the questions. We continue making sure that how this is gonna operate fits the vision and then we adjust that to the building. Not to say that the building is the easiest piece of this, but once we can understand how it's going to live and breathe. The building design and the concepts that come from it then seem to sort of iterate. The building design and the concepts that come from it then seem to sort of iterate in a very easy way as that moves forward. So I'm going to let Jim real quickly talk a little bit about how. We've matched up the vision and the operations into how we then put together the designs and the design concepts. We really always talk about how experience informs our process. And then it can be everything from the recent project that we were working on in Thornton, Colorado, helping them to create a cultural arts center. Our current work that we're doing for the city of Denver with the Loretto Heights renovation. And then other projects that we've done both near and dear to you all down the street at the table. As well as across the country as well, really looking at these cultural arts centers separate from our theater work. So Jim, will you walk folks through just a little bit of what what this design process looks like and how we put things together in early concept?
Sure. Very, very quickly, as Jenna said, it's driven by by the operational plan for the building and how the building wants to function in the community. Right? And then we work through the feasibility and we start to develop the the planning around those aspects of it. And we look at phasing in particular, right? It's very unusual in a community driven building that you have all the money upfront and all the time upfront. It's really important to create that phasing plan. And to be able to see that vision through or to alter the vision as you go along, right? You might need to change a face as you go along. So we really want to look at the building and at the uses and at the revenue stream and the operations.
Right. So here's the basics. There's a lot of work that still goes into this. You know, as we're talking about everything that goes into this, we really begin with vision alignment. We want to make sure that what has been developed by the community can lead forward in a way that helps to inform the process. So that does include some local engagement and sort of being in space in Leadville. That's really important to our process is continuing to be a part of hearing and listening and seeing in Leadville. We then start to refine the concepts in the process, in the proposal. There's a few steps of iteration that we go through. Sometimes this is building blocks coming together. We're moving things visually around in space. We're playing with the concept of let's not take down many walls. Let's try to work within the bones that are there. And what does that mean? How does that tie in? We also then do operational modeling and benchmarking, making sure we're looking against everything else that's being done in the country and applying that forward. Then we get into the cost modeling, the phase analysis, understanding how it's going to be used and coming down into a model that says. This is what the vision is. This is what matches how this happens. This is the long term financial and community benefit impact to the city of Leadville. Gets it to a place where city council can make a decision of a go no go before we go any further into design, construction. We really come in with no preconceived notion that this is a project that moves forward. We come in to say, let's make sure this is right. Let's verify that feasibility. And then if it is truly feasible for the community, let's help you move that forward in an actionable, meaningful and feasible way. So what this really comes down to in the proposal is you see two phases. There's a go no go at the end of phase one. We want to understand that if you get to the end of phase one, let's not keep spending money and keep spending hours to develop something there. Really getting a clear understanding of the feasibility, creating a roadmap for funding targets and phasing options. Getting council the availability to say go or no go. If we say go, then we get more into the operational modeling. We make sure you understand how that financial impact comes into the community. We get you data, we get you a long term plan. And then it can move forward into building your design team, getting into construction and moving that forward. So that is sort of our big quick hit through that. I know you all have a big agenda in front of you. So I'll just pause now and stop tearing the screen and open for questions.
Any questions for theater productions? In in your work with communities, do you help communities identify grants or even help apply for grants that might be appropriate?
Yep, absolutely. What we'll do is really start targeting two different groups of grants. You'll have your grants that'll support your soon to be established mission, vision and values for the operations and the programs. And what's going to happen inside of the vessel? And then there's also the grants and financial mechanisms that can support the building and the construction itself. So we can really help you look at what those two opportunities are and weigh those out. And then that can sort of develop into how you would want to raise those funds, where you would want to try to find and go after those funds as well.
Thank you. And follow up to that, what's your track record with your success to those applications? And additionally, how involved are you in those processes to begin with?
Great question. So what we do is really help you to develop your case for support. As you're going through and writing these grant applications, a lot of it is really making sure you have a strong case for support that expresses and hits the criteria. For how to qualify for those programs. So what we really do is make sure you have all of the materials you need to apply for that. We have additional services and support that can actually do that work for you. But as we're looking in the feasibility side of this, we have a really great track record of getting folks prepared. So that then you can just go out and start churning through those. The the standard Colorado applications for some of these grants are sort of standardized so that once you get that set, you can just get through those. We also started thinking about corporate giving. What else is there that isn't sort of the traditional government grant funds? Sort of the traditional foundations. I will say that as the political wheels are turning within our nation. Everyone is going to be chasing after government grants in a larger way. What we are advising our clients to do is start thinking about your alternatives. Start thinking in a different way about where the corporate gifts can come in. What does that look like and how does that tie into it? And and that's always different depending on the community as that goes forth. So. Yep. And I think for us in this early feasibility, it's really about saying, let's make sure that this roadmap is feasible and viable. Before we even start diving into getting grants and getting too far ahead of our skis. Right? Like, I think there's there's a way in which we can take community will and momentum and we can get out over our skis. And we all know how bad that gets. And we're down in the powder and we stick our heads up and we're like, what the heck happened? We're five years in and we can't build this building anymore. Right? So it's really making sure that where this is going is the right thing for the community at the right time, the right price, the right reason. Before we start even getting in and starting to write the grants and designing the rooms.
I appreciate the the healthy skepticism involved in in what sounds like, you know, very high altitude look. But at some point, assuming that those those necessary checkboxes are are checked and it still seems feasible. Eventually, action does have to be taken. So does theater productions help with, say, arranging for construction? And, you know, seeking out those. Those pieces of the moving toward the ultimate product.
Mm hmm. Yes, absolutely. So we have a focus in our company that's called owner's representation. And so through our owner's representation services, we do everything from helping to write the RFPs, finding the design teams, finding your construction managers. We're actually currently working on a large project in Frisco, Texas, just north of Dallas. We're we're the owner's representative for a three hundred and fifty million dollar project. That is doing sort of the nuts and bolts of everything there. But then we're also working on a project in Wheaton, Maryland. That is a ten million dollar project that we're helping to put together. The design team find all those pieces that come together. And doing it in a way that'll impact, again, the decisions that you need to make as the owner that are going to impact the people operating the space. So we have pretty robust services that help to put all of those pieces together. To make sure you can find the right people to continue that forward. And I love an implementation plan. If we can get an implementation plan together, we know exactly what is coming. We have the action. We have the deadlines. We have the metrics. That can move it forward in in a really good way and just getting all of the right people at the table.
Thank you. Are there other questions for theater productions? Thank you very, very much for joining us. I'm sorry that you failed out of dinner.
No, we we're happy to have the excuse. It's all good. It's great to see you all and thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Yeah, thank you.
And thank you again. Okay, not too far off of our our schedule. Let's move on to department reports. Buried in the heart of our meeting, Senator City Administrator.
Okay, great. Just wanted to highlight. And they Lake County Build a Generation, so they have their booth access summit this Saturday. And they graciously allow retail strategies to come and have a discussion about what retail strategies can do. And a lot of that presentation focused on the potential for a second grocery store. You know, in our community, as you are maybe familiar with retail strategies can do more than that. But because it was a food access summit, their presentation focused on. What are the needs for a second grocery store? It was a good time for a Saturday, a beautiful Saturday, and we did get a lot of input. I actually sat at the table with the owners of Tenderfoot Farms and got their input as well. So I did not get a chance to sit down with Mara Gwynn, who was their point person who put that all together to get all of the feedback. So you will. Thank you, Jennifer. What I'd like to do is get with Mara, she's out of town right now. But what I'd like to do is get with her and get all that feedback about what the community's questions are, what their questions are. So some people asked questions of Lacy from retail strategies at the time. But other people had the opportunity to write questions on Post-its or things that retail strategies might be interested in. So we did present that this is, you know, an economic development partnership that the the city is looking at. And so I know our agendas are crowded going forward, but it's on the December eighteenth agenda, I mean, sorry, seventeenth agenda, I'm a spoke. To have that retail strategies contract considered at that time. And I'm hoping to have all that community input gathered into you before then. So you can understand some of the concerns with the community about the need for resilience in the availability of groceries. What their questions are around that. So it's very productive and actually I think it's just a fantastic turnout for that. Following on the heels of the community center update. Just wanted to highlight that at the request of, I think it was Councilmember Thomas, Ms. Barrett did meet with the school district and the county. And had a very productive meeting on how to make sure projects do are aren't overlapping and are in partnership. And I wanted to make sure I wasn't, Ms. Barrett and I were talking, we weren't sure that everyone was clear on some of the facts as to where the county is. And there is one basic point is that the county's scope of project after a report by their their design team OLA. That it was going to be pretty expensive, around the eighty million dollar price tag. That they have dialed back what was going to be included in their project. So they are no longer including library and senior center. So I was under the presumption that everyone knew that I just, but Ms. Vern and I realized that maybe you hadn't. Understood that that project is being dialed back. And there is the opportunity to coordinate with the county to make sure that the projects are complementary. So we have been in communication with our DOLA Department of Local Affairs Representative, Randy Snee. And we are looking to have her come and visit to do a tour of what the community center is. She has, she saw the building before we purchased it and they were, she was on board and liked the idea back even before the. City purchased the building. We thought it's a good time to have, or it's a prime time to have DOLA come back and take a look at the building and see kind of where we are. The other update is eight oh nine spruce. So I think by now, I think that the three rooms should be finished. The basement unit is still a little bit in progress due to some of the water situation down there, but that is great news. So as soon as I get word that they, I got where the rooms are nearly completion or should be finished by now. So as soon as I get word on that, we will push up the information that those rooms are now available. Again, that will be a great relief. I did check in with our one tenant and while he, you know, he was, he was just appreciative of the city and appreciative of how it was handled. He said he's fine. So it was a lot of disruption. So I was going to say, while there was a lot of disruption. Our one tenant has held fast throughout, so.
He's very happy to have you on.
You know, it just, it goes to show that some projects are endless. But again, our tenant is very appreciative of the housing and is completely understanding about all the little heartaches that go with home. With that, we have department reports tonight, so I will stop there because there's lots of stuff going on, I think. I don't think there was anything else in particular. So with that, I'll, may I answer any questions?
Questions for City Administrator?
May I speak to that community center meeting? I was at that meeting with Lauren Barrett and.
Oh, the the with our, the county and the school district?
Yeah, with the district superintendent and CFO and then Lauren Snyder from the county. My takeaway from that meeting is that we need to keep having those meetings. And I think especially with the new BOCC coming in, we need to have a big. Circle up with them and city electeds and staff to talk about all the options because. You know, they're at the point, the county's at the point where they're considering they could run a special election. We tried to pass a bond measure to fund that project. The school district is looking at continuing operations of LCIS. Where the students would leave LCIS in the summer of twenty twenty six. So sixth grade would go to the high school, third through fifth would go to the young school. But they really need LCIS for their athletics. So the district would continue using LCIS gym as their athletics. But they're also exploring the idea of having LCIS be multi-use, multi-agency space. And so there is actually, I think that, I think the big change was that the that LCIS, the use of LCIS might have more overlap. With the city, the city community center than before. But between those three projects, the county rec center, city community center and. The future LCIS, there's a lot of potential overlap that really needs to be coordinated.
Right.
And ultimately even decided should all three projects go through, should we consolidate certain things into two? So I think that, I feel like we are still in the community at a pretty high level of sorting that out.
I think that's absolutely right. It's one step in the right direction.
Yeah.
But but we have actually talked about that and how do we? So I think that's a good point and that's great feedback is to continue to have those conversations because the real question is. From a community perspective, do, how do we provide all these? I want to use the word recreation, but but how do we, how do we pay for it and how do we coordinate? Sort of creative space, recreation space. And we really want to make sure we have a coordinated effort on funding. So in the sense of, like, the Tabor Opera House Foundation always comes to us and says, okay, we're going to apply for this grant, you know, is that okay? That's on a very small level, but on a big level, running a a sales tax measure is really something that if if one entity does it. We would really need to be on the page with the other entities to say. Are we all going to try it at once? You know, again, sort of like what the Sales Tax Task Force did was to, man, I didn't think I'd have to say that much more. But but that concept of having a, where everybody comes together for, I think is a really good one. So I think that's great feedback and I will talk to Lauren about having those meetings and figuring out who would like to attend those.
I guess for consideration in general, that seems to be an important thing that we should do for a lot of other things, not just. In this situation.
Right.
And I would love for us to have that inherent focus for the next year and following. Just for general planning and things that we do, especially as discussed with the new. All three completely brand new to even governmental space. County commissioners, I think it'll be all the more important that we hold a strong relationship to the extent we can with all the available partners. Hold a strong relationship to the extent we can with all the available partners around our community.
Yeah, so that's actually a good, a good issue. And, and the question really is, is it. At what point do you create one table that tries to be everything and invite everybody? Or do you create separate tables for separate issues and we just kinda probably need to navigate some of that. Because sometimes we create a table just out of urgency, right? So that was the sales tax task force. And, and I think. That worked well to, to extent, and so if we need that. Great, maybe those conversations and those relationships continue, we create a different table for. Different topics. Yeah.
And that leads me to one question for you. So we're at a decision point on budget for. Well, the city included a potential continuation of the community center project. Which is informed by these two presentations we've had tonight, as well as Lauren's work. As well as this. Ongoing need for collaboration. Where, where will we be making that decision? Will that be in our budget decision making?
Well, it'll be a two-part decision. I'm glad you asked that question, because that's a really important kind of where do we go, so. It's a two-part decision in that you'll have to decide. Shortly, how much money do you want to put in your budget for the community center in twenty twenty five? Right, so that, that's the preliminary decision. You know, again, you don't do things on a budget. It's an estimation, so you don't have to spend all the money you put aside and, and technically you can do a supplemental budget, so. It is an estimation. Of what you would like to put towards that thing in twenty twenty five. Then you're gonna, so if you make that decision, then you can and probably will make in a separate decision. Are we going to win a word contract to someone? Well, how are we going to effectuate the next step? So it's really two things. You need to put the money aside and should also have to. Make a decision. Now, if you say, I don't, we're not gonna put any money aside and we're not gonna hire anybody. In twenty twenty five or ever. That's an option as well, but it's really a two-part process. Is that? Answer your question?
Yeah, I just, I wanna make sure there's space to dig into some of those details, because I think. You know, the decision points we face right now with it are. In order to really adequately compare it and. To compare a community center to these two other projects, L C I S and the rec center. We might need more information that we need to fund just to continue to have that community level conversation. But we might not want to go so far as to be hiring. Design teams and stuff because we don't know whether it's gonna fit in that community holistic.
Correct.
Picture, so.
Exactly, so that's exactly the conversation, so what you, what you need to do. Before, well. By the third is decide what money you're gonna put aside. So again, you don't have to spend it, but you have to kind of figure out what your estimation is of what you might wanna spend. And you can, we can have that discussion, so we can, we have the work session next week. So we can add that to, you know, okay, what questions do you have and what questions do you need answered before the third? So you have essentially that discussion. And then the issue of, okay, do you wanna have more discussion, more consideration before you even think about entering into a contract, so. And you know. You, you know what Lawrence rate per hour is, you, you've heard from your, your. Essentially too, you can say bring back more companies who have, can do turnkey or partial work for us. But you know what's been done, there's been a ton of community engagement. So I, I, I don't think you. Community engagement needs to happen throughout. I thought the people were doing a comprehensive plan and had it, they nailed it. They said that never stops. But I think if you walk on Lawrence's chart where we are in the progress of things, now it's time to decide. You know, or, or think about the discussion of, okay, what, what's the next step and the next step is. You know, okay. Do we start working on the building? Do we start working on the division?
Yeah, thank you. So next week, it sounds like we can dig into some of those details.
Yeah, and so I, I'll look at the agenda, what we have for next week on the work session. Okay, so for the budget work session, police department budget, administration budget, so this does call an administration. Arba funds allocation and discussion regarding balanced budget. So we put that at the end to have everybody remember that. What we'd like to have at the end of the meeting on the twenty sixth is really a budget for. Our finance director to present to you on the third that you're comfortable with.
Other questions for the city administrator?
And you said this next week's work session will also have a presentation from retail strategies.
No, that's the seventeenth.
Yeah, that is this, well, we were gonna, but you know, I, I.
And we don't have until the end of December.
That's true, that's, well, and that's what I was thinking, I. I just, all my thoughts were, yes. Yes, that's a good point. We could, I, I'm, I'm sure Lacy would be happy to. But yeah, as far as the, the committing of the ARPA funds, we were planning to try and get that resolution before the end of the year, but. But your purpose, your consideration is a good one as well, we're also thinking about this as part of the budget process, so. Yeah, at, at the, so at the council's request, I can have her come and present at the next work session.
Are we also in need of a presentation for, I know we will have a hearing on this eventually, just for C P. But for the homelessness shelter as well?
Well, that was, I had it right now as it, it was a broader point on the, the. Schedule, I had ARPA funds allocation. So that was in part coming back with a document that had all the ideas. And if at the council's request, we could have presentations on those ideas that you can feel if you need presentations on.
I do wanna get a little bit of. Clearance from Hillary because if council has to hear a C U P on. The homelessness shelter. I don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot and make some ARPA discussion and determination ahead of that. I would like to, personally, I would like to get through the C U P process first. So that we can avoid any predetermination.
Hi, yai, yai, okeydoke, yep, so that's your presentation on the.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, so. Uh, what we could do then is have. That those presentations just at a fairness will be at the. Meeting on the seventeenth.
The one that is in all caps, I label, do not overload this meeting. And I'm anticipating that it's overloading, so.
So, so we could potentially.
From planning and zoning, though, assuming. Planning and zoning improves it, it won't be from me.
Well, it would be two things potentially then. If we, if we are trying not to create a problem as far as public hearing. We'd probably have to do what we're doing now, so we'd have to skip around, we'd have to do. A presentation after the C U P. Just to eliminate any issues.
Just one thought that if, if the city were to go out and construct a project right now. And we were, would, that would require a conditional use permit application. You would, but the very nature of being a city-owned project, you would be the funder of that. And it would still, there would be a standard process to come, still come through and require a conditional use permit. So certainly, you know, checking the city attorney, but I. I don't consider that any different from a situation where you were to commission a new construction project anywhere else in town that you owned. That we're basically applying by our own rules and requiring conditional use permit applications.
And we, we've had that happen, we're now that I remember, very explicitly, just a public comment against.
The community justice center was an example, we're a financial partner on that project and they got kind of partially through a C U P application, so. I would do, you, you could do it similar to that, I would support that.
So here what. All right, well, I guess what we'll do is that we'll get with ours to be turning. So we'll figure out if you're going to hear presentations. On December seventeenth, or if you're, we can put those on your. Next budget session.
So we'd be making a budget decision prior to the presentation.
Potentially. But ARPA isn't.
ARPA is outside of the budget, yeah. Okay, so it doesn't matter. Okay, thank you for that.
Yeah, we really would have our past annual budget in our business to figure that out.
Right, the only reason, the only reason ARPA affects your budget. The only reason ARPA affects your budget, if you are going to take something that's in your budget and try and pay for it. Out of your ARPA funds so that you can save money in your budget.
This is not like this situation.
Well, you know, we could, we, we could look at. Other things that i- in that meeting, you know, like we don't have to. We don't have to do a sweeping. Declaration of all of the ARPA funds, you know, yeah. I mean, on, on our next week. Like we could actually take this in pieces and talk about like, are there city projects that we qualify that would be covered under ARPA? You know, can we decide to move those projects into that and dedicate those funds? You know, like it doesn't have to be done all at once, it can be done piecemeal, ARPA can be done piecemeal, as long as it's done by December area. First.
Everything would be small.
Okay, final discussions or questions for the city administrator? All right, let's move along. I know street department is next, but we are just gonna, well. Uh, yeah. Have a look at the, uh, street department manager's not feeling well, and so. I just asked him if there's anything you wanted me to convey, just, he said, just that we're preparing all the equipment. Building storage for winter and training continues for new employees. And I'm happy to. Take any questions back.
Yeah. Yeah, all right, let's move on to this one.
Mayor, office members, it's been an interesting three, four weeks. A lot of good things are happening, but there's a lot of work to do. We currently have four officers working full-time, commenting to me. We have one officer that's part-time, it's Sergeant Brier, a lot of his time is occupied with training and helping with budget preparations. In regards to budget, we've massaged it repeatedly and, and found some places we could save. We also have one officer that's on medical leave, we have two full-time C S Os. And they are all staying quite busy. Yesterday, we became involved in an investigation of the school in regard to a school threat. There was a lot of collaboration between the school and it was brought to. Successful conclusion, sadly, we have to take enforcement action. But we're going to be spending a lot of time on campus over the next week just to ensure the safety of the students. Uh, we have two new police recruits, we're sending one to the academy in January, we're sending the other one to the academy in April. Two solid recruits. A week ago, we transported an inoperable squad car from dealership in Denver back up to Leadville. It was gonna cost thirty eight, thirty eight hundred dollars to repair the water pump on it, I believe that squad car is eight years old. So now we have two inoperable squad cars that we're gonna strip the equipment out of them, them and we're going to sell them at auction. Because they're no longer useful at all. We have a new records management system. With the police department sheriff's office, and actually there's, I have frequent meetings with the sheriff and the under sheriff because we all realize how important it is. With our small community, our isolated community, for us to work together for the benefit of all the community. Those meetings have been going incredibly well. But we have a new records management system. Now, this was instituted well before I came on board. But it appears that we might even be able to save some money with this system from our old system, and it's a more robust, better system than we had. What's interesting is this is the system that I introduced in Sturgeon Bay twenty one years ago. So it's a system I'm familiar with, it's evolved a lot, it's changed a lot, but it's a good system. In another effort of collaboration with the county, we do have an evidence. Room facility and police department in our basement. Uh, there's a lot of liability with evidence rooms, there's a lot of things that can go wrong. So our I G A allows us to utilize the county to help us with our evidence room, so listen. If it looks like we're gonna get to a point where their personnel will simply take care of our evidence for us. And they'll be the primary keyhole before the evidence room, I will be the secondary. And in regard to the police department report, that's all I have unless there are any questions. Yes.
Thank you, chief. Are you, what are you? What are you doing, if anything, with C S Os and officers to prepare for winter? Things like snow and bowl reinforcement, that even kind of. Check it in on Main Street and how that. Snowplains is going, that kind of stuff.
There's a lot of coordination with Tony, he lets us know where the problem areas are. Right now, we're dealing with a couple of different city parking lots where there are some parking issues. We're approaching those issues with compassion because it involves some of our population who's unhoused. But that's where there's a lot of dialogue and cooperation, collaboration.
And. Yeah, I, and it, it might not be now, I know it's just the first few weeks, but our. I'd love to hear as you go sort of ongoing vision of the C S O program and what that can be, because I think that was. Kind of, it's just been in its, it's been a new program that hasn't been curated to its full potential yet.
Yes, as a matter of fact, just today I obtained the job description for the C S O program because.
Good start.
Because I would get, I would, my vision is to. Get more. For it to be a more robust program that generates more, not activity, but better results. And I also want it to be a feeder program for us, for patrol officers, hire somebody as a C S O, get a feel for them, and if they eventually want to evolve into being a. Police officer, we will send them to the post academy. So I, I, I agree, that's a program that need to shine up a little bit better and get more benefit out of it.
Thank you.
Other questions for Chief Choppa? Thank you very much. Let's move on to fire department, Chief. Daly was, oh yes, is online.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Just a short report tonight, Station Two, we're still working on the original punch list. For full completion of that station. And I'll continue to work on that as, you know, as the months come. With the general contractor, so I'm hoping, I'm being hopeful that that will be taken care of here pretty soon. The last time I reported out on the purist engine, there was a pretty hefty price on the, on the maintenance cost or the repair cost on that. I was able to talk with the general manager and reduce that cost for another four thousand. Roughly about four thousand dollars and they credited, credited us about thirty five hundred also for warranty work. The hazmat trailer, we were able to pick up a hazmat trailer. And so if everybody remembers. We relinquished back the hammer and the air and light cart from the, to the south central region, this trailer is a replacement for that. So that we can have local and south central region hazmat response, so we'll be building that out in the next few months. We also put on an S two twelve class, it's a chainsaw class, and we certified. A few other members so that we can start doing some mitigation efforts. And we offered seven positions to our new resident reserves into our program. Excuse me. We certified nine firefighters and recertified them with their state certifications and also provided additional trainings out of H T C. And other areas like myself and the other chiefs went to a leadership conference. With Chief Boyle, he did thirty one S T R safety checks in the month of October and. There's a hundred and sixty seven total to date, so. That is gonna about, that's gonna sum it up, I think, for the full report tonight, unless you have any questions, thank you.
No questions for Chief Daly?
Good question, Chief Daly, you said that you're still working. Good question, Chief Daly, um, you said that you're still working on the. Certificate of occupancy for Station Two, does that hold up the way you use that station currently?
Uh, that's correct, so we have the certificate of occupancy, this is just a punch list to. Uh, finish out some of the uh other things, so like, one of the things uh that is not in service, which um we're having a. Problems with, and this has something to do with the phone line, and that's the elevator final. So, we are operating currently out of it, it's being, it's being utilized, utilized as it should. Uh, but uh, there's just some lingering items that we need to take care of. Yeah, actually, there's one, one more item that I'd like to be able to tell you about, and that's. I received um approval through the Friends of Twin Lakes Board. To move forward with a U T V purchase, and it's gonna be a new, uh, it's gonna be a Polaris Ranger one thousand, and this will have. Wildland fire capabilities, wildland firefighting capabilities on the backside of it, uh, to be able to take care of um fires in some remote areas, and that'll. Strictly come from the donation funding that we were able to receive for either operations and for Station Two, so.
So you definitely need some pictures of that.
Well, that's fantastic news, because that's, again, that's one of the ways that we leverage partnerships. The fire department is very good, I've always said chasing the money, and that was one of the things that was on the fire department's like future acquisition list. And so that's fantastic news, but thank you very much to Friends of Twin Lakes, they're a good partner for us.
Very much so, we're thankful for that.
Sorry, that's come up several of them at times, Friends of Twin Lakes donating specifically to the fire department, is there? Is there a way we could acknowledge their generosity as city council?
Yeah, of course.
And and not just the. I'm sorry.
Nope, please.
Yeah, yeah, not just the fire department, uh, I know that they've done uh a lot of things for other, other agencies as well. Um, community wide, so yeah, it's a great organization, I'm very pleased with everything they have done for us.
So I think that would, that we can definitely uh have an involvement in a city council meeting and. Cat's out of the bag, it's not gonna be a surprise, but I think that's a great idea.
I'll put her on the meeting for the seventeenth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we're about halfway through department reports, we typically take a very short break at eight P M, are people, how are people feeling? Take a very, three, three breaks, I wanna be respectful of department heads' time, but I know it's. Okay, thank you, everyone, uh, for your patience with that, um, let's resume. Our department reports with human resources, Lori, do you wanna?
Yes, briefly, um, we have several candidates, oops, candidates, I'm shocking, uh. We have several candidates that we've interviewed, we have um some excellent candidates, we are down to. One more, we've done two rounds of interviews with two candidates. And we have one first interview with another candidate next week, so we're hoping to speed things up, just been hard with scheduling. Uh, but we're hoping to get the oil decision maybe by the end of next week.
We got some very good candidates.
Yep. That's good news.
Great. Um, don't ask any questions, she don't have answers at this point. Let's move on to the animal shelter.
So our total animal count for an issue has gone from two thirty seven to two hundred and forty animals. So that's from January first to today. Happy to answer any questions over some statistics or any of the graphs. I know there was a question last time we met about the cost of food, so I have reached out to vertical pause. They'll be going through their point of sale system to run a report. It's gonna be easier and save some time versus me printing off all of our invoices and doing that calculation by hand. I'll be working to finalize the job posting for animal control, I was working on that job posting or. Job description with Paige prior to her leaving, so I'll meet with Lori to get that reviewed, and then we'll also be. Meeting with um the police chief as well. And then with the snow, um, snow choveling is one of our biggest needs, so I have reached out to. The usual public service program who sends us community service people, and they hope to be sending us more people for the snow.
Oh, and were you gonna mention the cost per animal research?
Oh, yeah, all right, um. So it was mentioned in the budget last week about our. Budget breaking down into fifteen hundred dollars per animal, if you take, you know, the total budget and divide it by the animals. Um, and I did send you an email, Joey, but I have not been able to find any national sources for that, I checked all the industry websites, checked with some colleagues. And just on our end, we don't have national statistics, but if you know where the thousand dollars are. Be glad to look into those programs.
Thank you.
Other questions for animal shelter?
Isn't that when you progress and talk about the work session happened today, or?
Yep.
Well, I'd like to know more.
Um, so the county, I have requested Caitlin, and they've requested some more information from the animal shelter in terms of. What staffing would look like with the increase in hours from our, you know. Full time people who were at thirty six hours moving them up to forty. Um, and so Caitlin took notes on the additional information that the county was requesting, and we'll get that to them as soon as possible. Their next regular decision making meeting is December sixth. So what I asked them for is an actual number that we can plug into our budget. Um, you know, if we have a fifty fifty split with the county, uh, even though, so our. This may, we may have to modify our final budget discussion, or at least we'll know before the resolution, because our. Next meeting is December fourth. Um, so their next meeting is the sixth, and I requested by that meeting, um, since they'll be able to make a decision that they give us. What their contribution number will be to our, to the twenty twenty five animal shelter budget. Their meeting is on a Friday, they said, you know, desperate times call for desperate measures, and uh, you know, we may also at some point have to consider an additional. Regular meeting.
Addition to their Tuesday meeting?
That I don't know, it is unusual for them to have it on Friday, but.
I actually think it is in lieu of their Tuesday meeting, because there's some. Conference and there's.
That makes sense.
Bless you. I think the other issue too is, you know, the animal, uh, the, the county has, you know, issued a letter about saying, look. We, we uh. Are exercising the, the, the terms of the I G A, and um, you know, there's potential that they would. Cancel their commitment come January one. Uh, the mayor did point out that their letter said that they wanted us to negotiate. And uh pointed out that the position is that we have been negotiating. Um, their position, com- uh Commissioner Fiedler was representing the position of the other commissioners is. Uh, they felt as though they, they needed some. Final I G A that potentially is not going to happen, because they realized the timeline cannot happen, and so I think. The, the county was saying that they uh may intend to uh. Essentially terminate the I G A, and in their words, take over the animal shelter. And so we don't know really, other than that Jeff Fiedler said to flip the situation and have it be. The county's animal shelter, we paid them. Um, which I don't know, we'd have to look through the I G A and find out if that's even possible, so it was a very, I think. Uh, we were not expecting that information, I was not expecting that information, uh, but that is the. Commissioner Fiedler did say there, there just has been changing sentiment with commissioners, and this is the current sentiment.
But I did, you know, I did clarify, like, I know that the I G A and the budget are related to each other, but they are also distinct in that. Both the city and the county have to submit a budget statutorily in December, and so. Regardless of what. What any next steps or what any outcome will be, we both need to submit a budget, and it currently has the animal shelter in it, so. So I really tried to separate out, you know, like, what can we commit to for twenty twenty five? Um, I did also clarify, you know, like, I'm three quarters of the way done with a, with a first shot in an I G A. Which includes the list of, some of the list of things that the commissioners submitted. Um, and I did clarify that, you know, am I wasting my time by working on that, if that's. You know, like, will that come to naught, and and Commissioner Fiedler assured me that that was still worth working on, so I will complete that, um. Hopefully this week.
So I'm trying to follow the line here.
It's been a winding path.
So it seems, I. So my understanding from the timeline is we had that initial meeting. Uh, that work session, uh, where the community came and everyone was involved. At that meeting, we had agreed, uh, both the county and the commissioners at that time, that it be important for us to meet. Uh, specifically Dana as our rep, Jeff as their rep, to come to some sort of agreement with. The county about this issue and acknowledge that their request to be involved in the budget process is something that we feel is very important, it should be. Part of it. And that ultimately ended up not happening, is that right?
Uh, that is correct, um, I reached out several times, and e- eventually, Commissioner Fiedler. You know, apologized, we're all very, very busy, and I received the message that the county was working on an I G A, which was a little bit of a. Surprise to me, but what they actually submitted were, I think, much more appropriately were, here are the important things that we want in an I G A. And that is what I received in the end of October.
And that's where I got confused, because I was wondering, do we have the county I G A, and we're working on a separate I G A? So it's more so, you're working on I G A with their points that they feel like are important for us to consider.
And then we will look through that and then submit it to them, kind of in the same way that, um. You know, that, that the fire management. Board I G A has been, has been moving along, it kind of goes back and forth, and eventually it gets turned over to legal and. And they, they do their magic.
We need to be clear about what happened in the meeting today, is that the county said they will have a number. For animal shelter for twenty twenty five, they are not committing to giving that num- that budget number to the city. It is highly possible that they take that money and do their own thing with it, and pull out of the current. Animal shelter, whatever that is.
And that would to us mean that our animal shelter budget is maybe not null, but. Uh, what?
It would be half.
Yeah.
It would be half, we would have half in twenty twenty. So, but the question is then, what services are we expecting to provide, and in that case, we would be, I think. Not in a partnership with the county anymore, and then our obligation would be to provide services for. You know, with city money, city residents, and if the county decides not to partner. And decides to do something different with their money that they've set aside for animal shelter, that. I think all of that is an unmitigated disaster, and that is not, of course, that we should take in a group project. But I want you all to be aware that that is a possible outcome.
And was there an opportunity for us to meet with the commissioners again, even if it's not formally, whereas in, as a whole council or rather individually? Um, and is that something that's desired, because I feel like. I mean, I hate to say it, but this seems like a very nuclear option right now, and. To me, I feel like regardless of what happens, we're on the same ship of. There clearly needs to be a change to the I G A and an update. Um, and I, I would hate for us to go down this rabbit hole of mistrust, once again, um, over something. Like an animal shelter especially, and I feel like it's worth our time if we can. Put some time towards meeting with those individual uh commissioners. About the specific issue, if that is something that feels like would be appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, you know, the tack that, that I am taking is, is that there are. Several different potential outcomes, but I remain committed to the idea that partnership is best. And uh provides the best service for our community and is the most cost effective. That we have an excellent model that currently exists through what, you know, fire management board for another shared service uh that we have, and. I, I keep, you know, I intend to keep promoting the message that, you know, I think this is, this is. The, the best and the most sensible path. Um, I understand that your nuclear option was put on the table today, and I, um, I don't have a sense for how. Admitted, they would be to that, and so I'm not. You know, I think we need to plan for a variety of different outcomes, but I don't. I don't really wanna give that a lot of airtime, um, because I think that. That doesn't serve our, our primary purpose, which is to provide animal shelter services for the community.
I think ultimately, the goal is the same, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's.
It's not, that's not gonna change, and. I, I guess I just don't want us to be in a situation where there's a feeling that we didn't communicate enough, whether it be individually or as a full council. And if it feels appropriate, like, to have those discussions at individual council levels with other commissioners. Happy to have that discussion, um, it just. Uh, to the point of collaboration, would want it to be something that we can work forward through, rather than. Um, have to work through a more, uh, less collaborative, I guess.
And Commissioner Fiedler did bring up, you know, the possibility that, that they, that they may say, well, we're going to continue the I G A for this many months.
Sure.
You know, this while they, while the new I G A is in process. Um, you know, so again, like I said, there's a lot of different potential pathways, um.
But I think to council member Luna Liao's point, y- yes, there's, there's no reason why, uh, well. There are some, but you know, I'm on quorums and those types of open meetings acts, but I think. Reaching out and, and to, to commissioners.
And I can ask if they'd be interested in a joint work session, I think everyone at this point is very, our schedules are very full.
A little bit.
There's, there's some important tasks going on.
Even if it wasn't all of us per se, and it was just a few council members and a few commissioners. Well, yeah, fair enough, um, at least one commissioner, I would be hopeful that that can kind of. Prove to, I also, do you have a general ideas to when you'll be able to finish that initial draft of the I G A?
So I'm on, um, I'm on section five of eleven, but like, the last four sections are kind of. You know, they don't change, they're just, they're just the technicalities, it's just how fast can I type?
Well, and also, the, the, you, where the I G A has to. There's a lot more steps, and just because the mayor's finished doing first draft doesn't mean. Something to be very specific.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's the start of a very lengthy, I'm sure, conversation, but I just. I guess if we can use as a catalyst for having a work session about the I G A, I'd be happy. To, I, you know, being the person not talking to anyone.
My, my schedule tomorrow is so. But I have. So I'm hoping to complete it Thursday.
Are we still working towards two I G As, I thought with the meeting in.
Yeah, because there's quite a bit more ground to cover in terms of, um. Less, it, it's more almost like a coordination of services with animal control. I G A, you know, like, obviously, Chief Chapa will, will have quite a bit of input into like. You know, but where do we house animal control here, you know, typically it is. People who have kind of like the C S O standings, be- because. animal control here? You know, typically it is people who have kind of like the CSO standings, be- because they can write tickets. Um. And so I think we, as as a city, have to decide where exactly does that live? Um, uh, Ms. Caraveo is sort of ideal because she had the police background, um, and so that may still come to fruition, we'll find out. Um, but we have to make some decisions about how how we implement animal control and where we implement animal control. And then I'll meet with Keith and see, you know, the same way that the commissioners submitted, like, here are here are the the priorities, you know, in order of what we're interested in, that we would like to see in an IGA, and then we can, then we actually have something to sit down and say, you know, how do we share, how do we, how do we intersect these services? Because we know one single animal control officer is just not going to be able to do it all the time, there will always be gaps where maybe we have somebody on, and maybe they have somebody on, and then, you know, it's like, two in the morning, and what do we do with with that? You know, do we rely on cross-training of some of the officers with basic uh, animal control techniques? Do we, you know, rely on, we have to have adequate training for proper impounding of animals, um, so that we can actually collect some of the the fees appropriately, um, you know, so there's a lot of that, the animal shelter IGA, I view as as more of a coordination of services, whereas with the animal shelter, I'm calling it the animal shelter advisory board, which we're modeling and and Commissioner Fiedler agreed with this to model after fire management board is is a lot more over, you know, shared, shared budgeting and shared communication about, um, expenditures and things like that.
Okay, got it. That's good.
Sorry.
Yeah, thanks, you know.
I was very.
Uh, are there other questions regarding the animal shelter or anything that we just covered? All right. Thank you very much, everybody. Thanks for your patience tonight. Um, deputy city clerk licenses. Plus, plus, I see in here.
Good evening, Mayor Green and members of council. Um, so just a quick update on business licensing, we've had people already begin the renewal process for twenty twenty five. Um, and I've had two new businesses, but one I'd really like to highlight is our new mobile veterinary service. Those folks actually were in attendance for one of our work sessions that we had, and they are officially um, on on the ground, rolling, if you will. Um, so that's exciting to have more veterinary services in our area. Um, but on to more important things, short-term rental licenses, big conversation. Um, the onboarding process with Deckard is nearly complete. I have a final training scheduled actually for this Friday. Um, and then compliance out, excuse me, compliance outreach will begin next week. Um, and just so you're know, um, in the know, the biggest thing that they are targeting and most things they have found in their data mining is many, many unlicensed units offered even in the city of Flappa. So that is going to be probably our big focal point. However, that kind of segues into a workshop that we're working on, um, and that planning is underway. As I mentioned last time, I've already spoken with Adam Ducharme, who's on board, and recently meeting with Cece over at the county, who, it was a wonderful conversation between her, myself, and Planner One Alex Willis, about how we'd all really like to work together about coming on this project. Um, and Cece is on board for joining us for our collaborative effort at the workshop. Um, and then also, I would really also like to bring in Commissioner-elect, I believe, the art was the appropriate term to say that, um, as well, just because of their background in this area and the prior work that they did, um, to my arrival. And so something we've talked about, once we go toward this outreach program, there's going to be probably a lot of unlicensed rentals that then want to come to us, but unfortunately will not meet our cap. Um, as Chief Daly already said, we've already kind of maxed out based on fire inspections, a lot of our rentals. Um, and so what we're planning on doing and communicating at this workshop is having something for these folks with housing options, and then we'd also like to talk with our housing authority team about maybe providing us some sort of list. Opportunity on their form of medium and long-term rentals, that would be a huge benefit to our community and something we really want to get behind. So we don't want it to just be, hey, you're not in compliance. But what we'd really like to say is, yes, you're not in compliance. But here's how we can help you and you can help us and make it more of a conversation that benefits everybody, city, county, housing, community, so.
Um, sorry.
No, please go ahead.
Okay, I'm happy to play a part in that, as you know, um, and to remind everyone, the regional housing authority, more specifically, uh, the county uh, has a list of landlords as well as renters, people seeking rents uh, in our community that is available to access to make those connections. Um, and very happy to make that direct connection and to potentially, if time allows, be there at that meeting.
That's what I was hoping you would think. Um, but so that's kind of where we are with this, and I'm excited that more people are wanting to be a part of the conversation, because we do feel like it's more than just the city at this point, it's 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 a lot, um, and with a lot of the development that's happening, it's only going to grow. Um, regardless of maybe people off the waitlist here in a in a few days, so more people off the waitlist, rather. Um, but just to finish real quick, I'm, right now, there's no newer pending marijuana licensing at the moment. Um, for liquor licensing, there's nothing new at this month, however, um, at the upcoming next council meeting, we're trying to, um, I'm trying to think, no, we do have it on the third, to try and keep the seventeenth more empty. But there is a pending bed and breakfast license hearing that is contingent upon approval from community development and planning that you might be hearing at our next council meeting. Um, and then I'm still working with the state on the proper way to handle the metering, but did not go through the channels. Um, just as far as what their role is, as far as handling that, um, compliance issue, and they have their own police department, of course, um, they they are kind of working on it on their end and getting back to me, so I should have more by that at the end of the week. Oh, and if there is an issue, Keith, I actually would love to introduce you to our state compliance officer, he's wonderful and he would love to meet you, so that's something we can have, hopefully, a conversation about
Good.
in your very small amount of free time.
Yeah, you're not busy at all.
Uh, but at this point, that concludes my report for the month, but I'm happy to take any questions that you want. Can I make one note on the mobile vet clinic?
Yeah.
So we, um, I know we've indicated that veterinary costs are a big part of the animal shelter budget and that sometimes our local vet is not available. So we have met with the, uh, veterinarians that are coming in and we are partnering with them on a economic development aspect. So their mobile veterinary clinic, we've, uh, were, have our city attorney's office working on a license agreement where they would be able to park in the community center parking lot, and they uh, would greatly appreciate that and be able to use, uh, that parking lot so that they can have a steady regular place to have appointments. And, um, we would work out with them, hopefully, an arrangement where we would be able to book appointments. We don't have any special uh, priority with our current veterinarian, other than we try and book at the beginning of the year to make sure we can have appointments, but just so you all know, it's valuable thing for us to have, and so we wanted to make sure that they succeed, and so we are partnering with them.
And they are, have acquired the 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 mobile clinic and are outfitting it, and they're, I think they are on track or they are looking to open sometime in January.
Exactly, after the new year.
Yeah. So will our animal shelter budget go down to reflect the availability of a local vet?
Yeah, we need to sit down, I think it, uh, hopefully, we need to sit down with them, so right now, they're not here yet.
Yeah.
Correct.
And they are not officially operating, so it's too soon to tell at what point they're actually going to be here and available to to, um, do work on animals. We've talked to them, uh, we did meet with our animal shelter manager and them to talk about, you know, the routine procedures and things we might need, so they were working on their, um, uh, cost analysis of, at the time of what they were going to need to be charging to to make ends meet, and so they asked us about what what our needs would be, and so the answer is, hopefully, uh, it would be fantastic, and we did meet with Dr. Lynn and I too, to explain that we are in no way, shape or form not going to use Dr. Lynn and I, so uh, it is, I I think we're 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 in, we're in good shape to have an opportunity to use other vets, but not at the expense of what our local business.
Yeah, he seemed actually quite comfortable with the idea of more vets in the area.
He is quite a case, as anyone would know.
I have one question from Miss Bushman.
Yes.
As Decker Technology rolls out and discovers, um, unlicensed units, will there be, uh, relatedly, a, um, back collection of accommodations tax money is owed?
That is something that I believe we're still working with our city attorney to make sure, as far as, um, our prior coordinators, um, go. Um, I will follow up on that part.
Yeah.
Yeah. And is there a difference between licensed holding renters who may not have paid the correct amount of taxes and unlicensed?
Ooh, that's a good question. Um, maybe I'm also in the full B, that's due, like, from the licensing, including the tax from an important.
Well, I think what your question is, council member, is that if they weren't licensed, could we still collect the tax on them? I will have to go back and read the ballot language.
Yeah, that.
Right, because that's what's key, is if it says you can collect the tax from licensed owners, then we're limited potentially to that, but I will go back and look at it.
But I I do think along those same lines, like, there was the question of back taxes that were not collected from licensed people that we can go back three years? Two years?
Three.
Or one year to, um, that that's the thing that has the deadline at the end of the year, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
So. Interesting question about the unlicensed owners, but I would also like, in addition to you know, identifying the unlicensed um, people to to also focus on what can we, what can we collect within our, um, from the licensed people that have not yet been paid since the accommodations tax started?
One more question there, it sounds like what you're description that there are more potential unlicensed short-term rentals that we were anticipating? What what does enforcement look like on that? Is it just certified letters from the city? But i- if if we do identify someone operating an unlicensed short-term rental, what are our actual options there, bringing into compliance? Why not to retire into? So therefore, what what does enforcement look?
Uh, that's what we have done in the past, so, uh, we had this is when Sarah Dallas was here, we had a letter that we sent to them and said, it looks to our records like you are operating, you know, a short-term rental without a license, please contact us as soon as possible to get this figured out. And so a lot of businesses contacted us and some of them said, look, we're actually not, and we have proof that we are renting, you know, for a chunk of time over the very serious dates, and they were able to show us they they weren't, um, uh, let's see, trying to remember the outcomes on them.
So is this the type of thing that would go to the CSOs, for instance, for ratification?
Yeah, well, so what happened was, we sent letters to the property owners, and now you're refreshing my memory, yes, we did have, we we sent letters to the property owners, there were a handful that called us and we worked things out, there were a handful, not even maybe three or four.
I remember there were very few, but.
Correct, so what we did is we had the CSOs go post on the door.
Right.
And I got a very angry call from a property owner who's like, why are you bugging my tenant, I'm a long-term renter, and we got it worked out. But we did utilize the CSOs, once we didn't get a response to our letter, actually post on the door of the property.
So potentially, there are two hundred and fourteen.
Yeah, that got our, that got their attention.
I do it.
So it could be, and I know that city council is really, would be really excited about the opportunity about revisiting the STR ordinance gap, um, so but we could think about, depending on kind of what what Miss Bushman discovers and kind of what the outcome is, we could think about staging and escalating a response to someone who is who is just not responsive and who is refusing to.
And I think that was the, that was the fault, there were people who is.
So we could, we could, you know, we could expand, we could change the code with sort of an escalating response up to, I don't know, you know, get as stern as you want. The other thing, um, that's sort of prefer, you know, related for the people who are unlicensed, you know, and having Miss Bushman's, um, workshops to go on this, one of the other things that we could consider as council, um, based on state legislature um, or a bill that that went into effect this summer, is that we can consider offering, say, a property tax rebate to targeted people for community benefit, so we could, for instance, say, if you, you know, if we, if you can prove that you you have decided to long-term rent, you know, like, we we could encourage that by saying, we'll, we'll give you a package actually, in exchange for that. Um, I don't know if that's that would be the appetite of council, I'd like to throw that out, there is another possible way that we could encourage long-term rental out of your, um, some of the workshops.
And just to clarify a little bit further, Deckard is using our code violation, um, chapter that Plainer Chanchan, uh, Lechanchan brought up as part of their outreach escalation process, so it's following our code as far as that goes. If that helps.
Thank you.
Sure.
There's a lot of teeth in that code right now.
Great.
That's that's good to know, thank you.
More so than some other, other sections. Yes.
Yeah.
It does, yeah, fines, jail time.
I remember talking.
He leans on the. That would be the first real quick.
The guy with the jail sign.
Are there further questions or discussion on, um, deputy city clerk's licenses report? Okay, good discussion, so thank you. Uh, let's move on to community development and planning.
Good evenings, mayor and council, um, switched up the memo format that you received in your packet this time, trying to find a time-saving opportunity there, so, um, I'll try to refine this a bit, uh, let me know if this doesn't work for you, and we we definitely need to switch back to memo format, but I'd like to try this for a little while, just using some, um, spreadsheets and things we use internally right now before we, uh, I guess, in in lieu of having any kind of project management software uh, right now. Um, so I have five updates, five key updates for you tonight, um, highlights from, uh, the memo and the the spreadsheets, uh, one, just want to update you on the Raylaire construction um, situation for phase one, uh, be updated, there is, uh, no change in circumstances, we remain in enforcement mode, may have heard that from me um, over the, um, course of the year, uh, that doesn't mean that there's a lack of any activity, there's a lot going on. Um, but a- at the end of the day, that is our updated status, uh, we remain in enforcement mode. On, um, expected applications, I have two things just to mention to you, um, there's been a lot of conversations with the property owners for the Cascade Claim Property, um, Cascade Claim LLC and their, uh, requested proposed annexation, they came and spoke to you about. Uh, after their presentation to you, um, I've had several meetings with, uh, then the property owners, their agents and and the county regarding, um, access, their proposed access. Uh, comprehensive plan talks about extension of the city grid, um, in that, uh, in that area of of town, uh, which essentially means dedication of rights play. And so, uh, we, I'm coming preliminary staff negotiations with the property owner to talk about what that, what that looks like. Um, before we really get, um, have any more meetings with them, we need to get a survey, and it's been requested for many months, and we still don't have that. So, uh, that survey really needs to happen before we can kind of continue that conversation, but there have been a lot of meetings about that uh, to see if there are possible public benefits that can be obtained that are identified in the comprehensive plan. Uh, Raylaire Phase Three, um, I'm meeting with Fading West tomorrow, and they are proposing to come in for for Phase Three. Um, that is going to lead me into my next, uh, highlights regarding code amendments. Uh, so I need to make the council aware that at this time, city cannot require deed restriction for affordable housing in any PUD that is not in your existing requirements, the applicant can voluntarily require that, we do not have inclusionary zoning requirement. That is not in your existing requirements. The applicant can voluntarily require that, and we do not have inclusionary zoning required in our facility. I'm going to prioritize this. Identify a um an opportunity and I'm going to, I'm gonna uh bump this up in terms of a higher priority. We've done a lot of requirements this year. Um, this this needs to, I need to bring this in front of you. Uh, we, there has been some momentum this year that is related to this. I'll let you know. Um the council saw, sorry, planning zoning commission saw a draft of some red lines from me for this earlier this year, and that was kind of at the recommendation of the city council last year to start looking into this. And that was related to some of the some of the ordinances that you just recently passed. Uh, as you're all aware, this summer, we had a housing needs assessment, which helps to identify um a percentage, uh if you will, of um of inclusionary, a percentage of inclusionary zoning requirements, starts to hone that in. Also, the meeting with the county and the county is putting out RFP for for several things. One of those would be for a nexus study. And that nexus study would be essential if we were going to require fee in lieu um of any inclusionary housing dedication through a P U D um inclusionary zoning ordinance. So uh those are some of the things that are happen that have happened this year that are happening that would set us up much better for a P U D inclusionary zoning uh ordinance um uh than that were were a year ago. And I should have clarified, sorry for the acronyms. P U D in our code is a planned unit development. It's a custom zoning. So it's a it's a zone that is in our code. If if a property is over six acres, they can come in and do a custom zoning. Um, because sometimes it doesn't make sense to apply the zoning standards for uh any other property to a large property like that. Uh, last update would be the on the comprehensive plan. Um, you've heard um from me uh several times, and many of you have been involved in community meetings. Uh, so just update of the past month. Um, there's still a lot of work that's going on, um building teams, refining teams for this project. Uh, website is being created and maybe going live on today or tomorrow. Uh, and we are starting to have more uh meetings with um kind of core um um groups that need to be identified. So last week we met with the um all the apartment heads for Lake County Government. Uh, for example, it's one of the um one of the um meetings that has been happening over the past month to um kind of start this engagement uh process. And really what we're focusing on right now is values. I'm doing facilitated values activities. Uh, there's a worksheet that's out there that can be filled out online similar to a survey and just trying to identify what um as we begin the engagement process, what do our community members value? Um, as we as we proceed into the other stages of this year long process. Those are my my key highlights. If you have any questions, thank you.
I've heard a gentleman in the planning department considering getting you a holiday gift of a T-shirt that says, we need a survey. Uh, questions for Mr. LaChance?
Your new format's actually very easy to understand. Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Definitely appreciate it.
Thanks.
If that saves you time.
Thanks for the feedback. It saves me a better part of the day, and we'll refine that with uh what we have three team members that one team members projects are not on there, but we'll get there.
That's good.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's relatively easy to review enough to. Um, I did have one question regarding the uh community builders um thing. I um as a member of the community, as well as a council member, would like that there is uh intentional focus towards the nonprofit sector. Um, I've had a conversation with multiple department heads there and they've um been feeling like there needs to be a little bit more conversation with them uh in regards to this. Uh, I I think there's wonderful opportunity for collaboration, ways that we've talked before, but in many other ways that we haven't yet. Um, and uh it seems like at the very least C four, we are making those steps initially, or ED is. Uh, but maybe just circling back with uh all the other main players in that field uh for this, uh including friends of Twin Lakes, um full circle advocates of Lake County, um LC bag. And I'm sure there's plenty of information.
Thank you. Uh, I'll um I'll immediately um communicate that comment back to the project manager.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yeah, I've got one question also. Chief, and I know I brought this up before, and it's still just kind of a mystery to me. Thinking about the urban renewal authority and the tax increment and properties within the urban renewal authority footprint. Improving their properties. And I see several on the table that are on Harrison. Some are many are insubstantial, but some are not insubstantial. Are we capturing improvements made to properties within the district? And sharing that with the county property tax assessor so that we get an appropriate calculation of the tax increment increase?
It's a great question. I I do recall, um, you bring that up before, and we did look into that. At that I think I there was one monthly department report where I kept providing kind of a snapshot of what were the course of at least the past year. And we essentially did not have any any meaningful development within that area. It it's been a while since I provided that report. I feel like that was good nine months ago. Um, the only workflow that I think that we would have for that will be going back and looking at the addresses on some kind of interval, um probably at the most a year interval. And that that sheet is actually provided in your um in your packet, you know, shows all the permits for the year. And so that is one way. We don't have a, we don't have any kind of G I S software here to define that boundary and have a way to flag that when those permits come back up and report that. So that's not that that's the only way. That's one way that communities would do that when when there's a uh a project that comes up in a certain zone that has a special workflow. Then um then there's softwares out there, software out there that captures that within a spatial boundary, it's all a G I S based. Um, so that's one one way to do that if we had, like, if there was a G I S software.
But the question is, is the county dreaming on there? We can.
Not that I'm aware of.
Because they have a G I S person.
Right.
Yeah. Typically recorded by building permit.
That's right.
And that that's how that workflow typically works.
Say that again. How's that typically work?
So the uh the value added uh to the assessor comes through the building permit. So you have an estimated cost of work uh that goes through the building department that gets recorded with the assessors office. And then value building is is modified.
It's the it's the information that contributes to how the assessor values the property.
Right.
So the urban renewal authority needs to talk to the county to make sure they're flagging properties.
An ongoing issue for lower board. Yes, that's that's the communication part that we.
And I think when I came brought this back to you the last time, it was more the focus of reporting back to council the projects that were occurring within the um the U R D boundary, which was at that time was not much.
Well, and to be honest, you have a very good point. The county does have a G I S department, and they can create an overlay specifically of the of the urban renewal authorities boundaries. So the things could be picked up inside of that based on building permit.
And to be honest, I think that's the hundred and ten percent question that has existed since the beginning of my tenure here, which is how is the county getting the information for the assessor to plus you? Create the property evaluation that goes to contributing the money to the law, and that has been a black box for me. It is then that question from the beginning.
Literally from the beginning. There hasn't been a moment in my tenure here that that hasn't been part of our conversation.
And are we calculating it appropriately? I mean, that was the whole reason that consultant was here, and that was all that work the consultant was supposed to do, and piles and piles of paper later, we still didn't have the answer. No.
And and even the assessor at this point will tell the board that they're not sure they're calculating it correctly, and they're not sure what the answer is, if that makes sense. That's that is indeed big bone of contention.
I don't understand the path forward, but that's, I guess that's not for city.
Absolutely valid questions.
I mean, I think you could break that deeper into kind of like two things is one 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 is what what's what's happening out there too is what's the workflow that would capture that? And I think we've identified the second part of that. Um, you know, in terms of the the first part, I mean, there we haven't seen a lot of, you know, a lot of permit ac- activity. Um, you know, that's resulted in construction. We have the man cabin that's getting going. You know, just saw a conditional use permit for, I'm sorry. Um, historic district permit for the property across the street. Um, so you're starting to see, you're definitely starting to see interest, but I don't know that you're seeing you know, a ton of construction activity yet.
It's phase three of the rail yard in the in the tax increment zone?
Yes. The rail yard is included in the urban.
Yeah, very explicitly, uh especially as we know through uh the Chivi Trust project.
It was the reason, one of the main reasons that urban rental authority was formed.
Yeah.
Questions for Miss LaChance?
Our new format is easier, I think.
Okay, thanks.
It's it's kind of a nice way to look and see like everything that's been accomplished.
Yeah.
With your department, it's like, oh my God, it's pages and pages, like.
Did it print? Okay, because there's another tab for all the things that were moving. So, okay, we're done with that. Uh, I don't think that's showing up in the packet. Thanks.
You have a lot, a lot to be proud of.
And um hey, I was given a couple of action matters that are working around it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, let's move on to financial sales tax comparisons and bills. I just
Getting me, Mayor Council. Um, just jumping to my report, um give you some highlights and we'll just go over there. Um and I don't know if you all have noticed, but over the course of the last few months, but interest rate keeps coming down. It is now below five percent. It's still better than, you know, our local banks, but I am um continuing to to watch that. Uh, prime is the one we initially invested in, the two million. Um, so I think we've we've lost about half a percentage rate right around there. Um, so I'll just keep watching that. It's still the best place, I think, for our earnings on our our funds. Um eighty three of the budget, percent of the budget has passed through October. Um, general fund revenues are running below it below budget at eighty percent or approximately after seventy eight thousand dollars. Um, expenditures are running slightly over budget at eighty five percent year to date. Um, we have seen some bigger, this is again through October. Um, we did see a a bigger noise come through for like paintings, so I think some of that's kind of timing. Um, we'll just continue to watch those for the rest of the year. Um fire plan revenues are about sixty seventy six percent year to date. Um, we are expecting approximately two hundred eighty five thousand dollars in wildland fire reimbursement. So um we're still watching for those to hit the bank. And that'll help even those account. Um, county has been billed and paid through September. Um, August and September were paid in November, so they are not reflected in in these financial statements. So we're catching up on those as well. Um I will be billing for October um in the coming week weeks and then in November, once we finalize or in December for November, once we finalize the November um financial statements. Um, expenditures for the year for the fire plant are over budget. Um, yeah, we do not budget for the wildland fire or fire training expenditures as, um, you know, we don't know what those might be year to year, year to year. So we will, um I think we typically tend to run over budget, and then we have the revenues to offset that. So um explainable when we do a supplemental budget at the end of the year. Um sales tax for October um was four hundred and twenty five thousand. I'm not sure that I don't know that that's, I think that's the number in the financial statements. So we receive four hundred and four thousand seven thirty two. Um so we are over budget for October by approximately ten thousand dollars, which is really good. Um, year to date, though, we are under budget by eight grand. Um, compared to twenty twenty three, year to date, we are up about ninety nine thousand or three percent. I'm still predicting that um our total sales tax revenue for twenty twenty four will be around the three point seven. I I don't, unless there's something magical happens in the next couple of months, um, I I still won't see where we'll hit the three point back. Um let's see what else I have here. Accommodate accommodations tax, um, seeing an increase of approximately twenty three percent compared to twenty twenty three, quarter three of twenty of this year, uh and twenty two percent increase year to date compared to twenty twenty three. Um, and that is through anything that we receive through October. There's been some strike up train has come in in November. Um, so maybe you have an update on those numbers next month. Um upcoming items when I compare my report, um they still had happened. So I have actually been working through interviews for the accounting position. Um, so uh we've had three or four thus far. Um, we'll continue to go through that process. And get with with Lori on this review. Um, as we wrap up year end, begin thinking about the twos and ten ninety nines, not that there's anything else going on right now. Um and I think that's about it for highlights. Do you have any questions or anything on that report or any of the other?
Questions for? Miss Healy?
So we're looking at the sales tax. And specifically looking at the previous three years for the next two months. Um, why is it that the budget was set relatively high compared to those three years for those two months?
Um, the twenty, that is formerly driven based off the prior um three years. Um, and the May twenty twenty two, we have that payment of nearly five hundred thousand, which really skewed the budget. Um that that there should have been a a harder look. Um, I can get the budget for for twenty four.
I hear that for May, but specifically for November and December.
It it's formula based.
It's just formula based?
Yeah.
Okay, then, yeah, it just, I guess, caught me off guard because it's it's relatively high compared to the just at the line set of previous uh three years uh when looking at the graph, but yeah, fair enough.
And it's just odd, because if you think about, so we just got the October numbers, which means that that's for September.
Right.
And that came in over over our projected revenue.
Right.
Yeah, I I think I um tried to explain that in my email last month after our um department reports. Um, so it takes the formula takes uh the the prior three years divided by the budget, I believe, and then it's multiplied by budget number that was put in there. Um, and it's not a perfect.
Right.
Um, so, you know, I can't, I can't really speak to what
No, totally.
There, but um, yeah, I do get what you're saying, and and so I've been I'll continue to watch it. I mean, the last three months have um have been year to year good.
Yeah, they've been pleasant surprises.
Yeah, so you you never know.
Just gotta hope for five pleasant surprises in a row.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, one of the issues with the sales taxes, we've been hearing, you know, the COVID bubble has burst and and we're going to drop off the ledge of sales tax, and this is good news.
Right, right.
This is good news saying, you know, we're not, the ledge isn't this one. We we still kind of hold our breath, but this was, these were good sales tax numbers.
Do we, do we have an idea of how much of that is uh because of the wafer tax? Um, uh, do we have any of those types of statistics to look at, or is that?
Not in the reports that we receive because it's based on jurisdiction code.
Yeah.
Um, and and the taxpayers are are very protected. So I don't get to see any of that information. Um, I can do some digging to see if there's a formula or
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see kind of if we can get a general idea as to where's that revenue coming from. Is it online purchases?
It's almost like before and after comparison.
Yeah.
Hardest part, because we can't uh, we can't actually get the data of what the tax was paid for.
Yeah.
Do you remember that one anomaly? We had that huge month that always throws us off.
Yes.
We don't actually get to know what that tax payment was for.
Right, and yeah, that that makes total sense. I just Right, and yeah, that that makes total sense. I just, there was any available information. Be great to see if, you know, because I think that tells a lot on trends more.
Well, county does provide um some of that information. Um, so I can look at one, the last reports that they sent for um, sales tax and lodging, I believe they're breaking those down by industry.
Hmm.
Um, and uh whether they're online purchases as well.
And and no rush on that, I know we're in busy season for us, so more so just a thought for us to potentially explore in the future.
Other questions? Ms. Hewlett, um, moving on to the bills. Other questions about the bills? There's an awful lot of those, like, plus minus, plus minus, and the same amount, which I understand is somewhat linked to the positive pay system, um. Which still just balances out, but just looks.
We did have some issues, was trying to use the system to set up uh recurring, so we could pull in at least a vendor and then update the amounts. Um, and the system went crazy, we definitely reversed some of those to uh and there was some that posted back to twenty eighteen, that is not correct. Um, so that it could be some of that smell that we had to to correct and we'll try to.
A little more efficient. The system went crazy is, I I think one of those common things with this system. Yeah, it tends to have.
Need a motion?
Yeah. Best made motion for a second. All in favor?
Uh.
Aye. Okay. Great, thank you for that. Uh, let's move on to our our, actually, our thankfully only action item. This is the first reading of ordinance number nine. Um, this is our, our, our tobacco product retailer licensing ordinance. Which has been so beautifully put together by our hand partners.
You mean you weren't just sitting there for the evening?
I know.
We are.
You're not interested in that?
Um, so today I just have a very, very quick overview, um, because it's like, you know, everyone's probably ready to go home. Um, can somebody hold?
Yes, thank you.
So I'll just get started, I'll just go in. Um, so obviously, it's the first reading, just like you said, how exciting we made it this far. Thank you, everybody. This is awesome. Um, so I will just be sharing some data from our neighboring counties, uh, which is Summit. And how the T R L is helping with the improvements and sharing some positive feedback for management at our local retailers. And like I said, just a quick overview. Um, and as we all know, the public health agency will be taking on the same thing from inspections to enforcement, application process. We actually have gotten the application finalized, um, so we have all that put together already as well. Just to recap, we're increasing retail sales. Oh, sorry, slide two, I forgot about that. Um, increasing retail sales age to twenty-one years or older, capping the number of retailers to twelve and then four for the city and eight for the county. Two inspections annually, including underage compliance checks and one thousand feet distant requirement from youth organs organized facilities. Uh, slide three. This is Summit County's compliance data. I thought it was really exciting. Um, you can see the first bar there is eleven retailers. The second bar is the non-compliance, that's their first check that they did. And then the second bar would be the recheck. So you can see, obviously, that when they did the rechecks, for the most part, that bar went down. So it's it's improving, it's working, and that is our goal as well, is to make that work like they did. Um, next slide. This one might be kind of hard for you guys to read. I tried to smash it on there. Obviously, I'm not going to read this. All this is some feedback from our local retailers, um, from the actual tobacco survey that I went around and took. Um, all the top answer questions here, I can even read it. Um, I have to get my glasses on soon. Um, how has enforcement enforcement of these laws impacted your business? And they all say none of them were burdensome, so that that's positive for me. Um, and then I'll go down to the question number twelve. Um, some of the feedback, this one was kind of cute. She says, I think it's unofficial for the comment or the community of the health. But if we do this, we should ban fast food. I thought that was kind of funny. Um, and then if you go to the third one, she says that she would have heard. Um, so all in all, it was positive feedback, and like I said, I didn't really get any pushback from any of the retailers that I was able to get the survey from. And last but not least, this one's for you guys. Last slide. It says, thank you and happy Thanksgiving. God will do you well. Like I said, don't speak one too much. Any questions?
Uh, is this um also encompassing the ten days wait process?
Yes, tobacco is an umbrella term for nicotine.
Um, our city administrator has, what's happening? Alan, we're hooting.
They're not looking at each other anymore.
They loved your joke. Uh, the city administrator has written a very robust uh city council communication um form for this ordinance. Do you want to add anything to um this presentation or the?
Nope, just thanks to county for their taking the lead on this and thank you for letting us letting us be a part of the project.
Yeah.
We want to be, see it be successful. So this is first reading.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you will uh have an edit of second reading, but if there's any changes. So our structure basically is, you can see, is much shorter. The county has the structure. We're just gonna say if you want to have a tobacco, due tobacco sales, you you've got to comply with the county licensing structure, so we just point to theirs.
Hmm, okay.
Seems much simpler.
Yeah.
Yeah, and our second reading will be on December third, if you guys correct.
Well, and we um may need to make that on the seventeenth. So two things, one, and then our second reading can say the date yours was passed, because we need to fill that part in. And also the tight timeframe between publication, so we did not have enough time after this meeting. It's ten days for us, so what we want to do is have this, whatever comes out of this meeting, if there's any edits, that'll be publicized in time and so it'll be the seventeenth if that's. Hopefully, that's like a start for the end of the year.
Okay, so then we'll just say this is seventeen period and then I'll get information for the packet. Is there anything specific that we need to do for that date?
You don't, you don't need to do anything unless there are changes to the actual, our actual ordinance. There's nothing, it will just be presented.
I've never been through this process, so I'm just kind of winging it.
Yeah, so our second, our second reading will be a public hearing, so it'll just be a little bit more formal talking about it. We take public comment at that point, um. And then we. We just do what we do, yes, yeah, okay, yeah, awesome, thank you. All right. If there are no further questions, I will consider. Oh, so hang on, let's let's take.
Uh, yeah, a brief comment about this, um. I was hoping that uh maybe with this tobacco uh product uh definition or, um. Tobacco product definition, also uh consider maybe the uh things like papers and pipes and things like that be somehow included in this. Um, where the Chinese restaurant was, in the window, they have four marijuana pipes. And I guess there's some kind of things to use with joints. They have seven devices portrayed there. This is a place where children go in and out. Um, I think that should be kind of controlled somehow, but um, so that's my issue with this. Can these uh devices that are used for marijuana, which could also be used to tobacco, could that be somehow encompassed in this uh controlling of? Thing.
Um, I I guess I'll let the city administrator comment further on this. But in terms of our authority to regulate, this specific ordinance references the Coloradoized statute that gives us the um authorization to regulate the sale of cigarettes, tobacco products, and nicotine products. And so, do, I'm not sure devices fall under that, that particular authority granted to us by the state.
So maybe we need a different ordinance for that.
If if we have that authority.
We're even allowed to.
Yeah. I don't know the answer to that stuff, perhaps.
Would be if they're FDA approved, that would be, that would be something that we could do. That would, that's way above and beyond our, you know, had it been some of the.
An FDA.
The vape parts are FDA approved.
But. We regulate like the brands that they're advertising for tobacco-specific products. So like some of the signs in the windows that you see downtown will be taken down. So there'll be less marketing that's visible from outside of the store.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Uh, Councilmember Hill.
Uh, yeah, I have a question, um. Do we know how many retailers are in the city limits right now?
There is actually now five in the city. Um, someone uh received a state license while we were in the middle of our T R L.
So then would we achieve the the limit of four by attrition?
Correct, yes. So when one business closes, there will not be another allowed to open. So it will not stop any existing businesses, and it also really shows the need for this type of local regulation.
Yeah. Yeah.
Also, I have had another comment, um. I believe Mount Massive Liquors sells single cigars. And I did notice in the regulation that is not allowed. Is that correct?
This would give us the authority to regulate them on the local level, because right now we wouldn't have any power to go in there and have them do anything. Um, but with this ordinance, once it passes, we will be able to enforce the regulations which do address single um cigars.
So a liquor store would not be able to sell single cigars.
Um, based on what's written in the ordinance, I think it's little cigars is called out specifically. So we would, I mean, obviously, we'd do some research, um, but yes, that is called out in here. It's not to be allowed. They have to be in a pack. Yeah.
Well, their little cigars are twenty packs and then regular cigars are six packs, so how how do you differentiate?
Well, then, no single cigars. I think there's something in here for like very expensive cigars or cigars that are at a different level can be sold, but like not the.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thirty dollars. I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that completely.
Oh, did I, I worked in on this, so they they sell like high-end cigars for like thirty dollars each.
Uh, seemingly, there is something in ordinance to recognize that class of cigar. Um, as opposed to the the other types of cigars that are a bit, or.
So there is a differentiation in the ordinance of a premium cigar versus a little cigar and versus any cigar?
Then I can tell you that we will become cigar experts. We are now cigar experts.
Here's Lucy, it's right here, here's a little cigar. Oh, it does.
Yeah, there's a, there's a definition of little cigar.
Yeah, I seemingly remember talking about this in the local presentation. And I seemingly remember that there was a specific classification for very expensive cigars. Now I don't know what yield it's very expensive.
I think, yeah, he would um learn exactly what falls into each category so that we can successfully regulate all types of cigars.
Councilmember Hill, I want to thank you for your, your very careful reading of this ordinance.
I also appreciate it.
I'll read into, I'll read into it more. I'm just concerned that we're going to affect an existing business that's trying to sell a nice cigar.
We can bring more information on that, Tim, too, to the second reading, so it'd be helpful, or if there's an appropriate channel involved in between, I'm happy to do that as well.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
To understand you correctly, you would like to to not um prevent this existing business from, from selling single premium cigars.
That's correct.
Thank you. Um, okay, I guess we would have to look very carefully at this.
We would be happy to do that.
I appreciate that.
Bring back a very specific answer and even check out what they're selling.
Yeah. Yes, thank you. All right, are there further questions or comments on this ordinance? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Councilmember Lumen, that moves to approve ordinance number nine, series of twenty twenty-four. An ordinance of the city, council of the city of Leadville, adding new chapter five point five two to title five of the Leadville Municipal Code Regarding Tobacco Product Retail Licensing on First Reading.
Our seconds. We'll call please. Mayor Proton Thar.
Yes.
Councilmember Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Mayor Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Lino?
Yes, I I had a procedural question. I seemingly remember that we normally include the second day uh for the second hearing for motions, I don't.
I mean, I didn't understand what you said. What, continue it to a, if we continue a hearing, then we have to set a certain date.
Okay.
Um, right. But just for the record, it's on our December seventeenth.
Yeah. I I just, I don't, I remember reading that any motion before.
Okay, I really appreciate your supervisor's patience tonight. I know it's a long meeting.
There's more.
But there's.
You guys want to make a public comment?
Yes, that was you all.
I I have a public comment, but not on this issue here.
Yeah.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, so I name Steve Prescott, I live along every one of these thirty, Marie and the character. Apparently, a uh.
Oh.
Retail cannabis movement. Um, okay, so, very Washington. I will screen this. Well, I'd like to know when the S T R uh work session is being held. I'd like to attend that. And there was something in the uh uh one of the other reports about a work session with Alex, and I would like to uh attend that also, be prepared for it. So I'll have to get my chance about that, I guess. Um, some years ago, I I saw a movie in in Boulder. In the beginning of the movie, um, a woman is curled up in a fetal position in a uh in a vineyard in France, and she's expired, obviously, she's dead. And then the whole movie takes you through before that happened, and at the very end, you see her die. And at the very end, she goes through a bunch of trauma, and at the very end of the movie, she gets like, uh, she's having an an episode and uh, I figured what would happen, she was highly stressed. She ends up getting somehow dunked in a wine uh celebration um festival. And then this was the last thing that the uh put her over, and she ends up in the vineyard and dies of exposure. Um, sometimes I wonder if uh my financial uh trip through Leadville was basically the same kind of thing. I do not have uh any substance abuse, uh it, I don't have issues. I I don't use substances, other than sugar and caffeine. Um, but I've had some. Um but I've had some financial reversals recently. A good deal of my money uh that I get from social security goes to big house, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars a month to maintain storage for my books uh business. And uh money's hundred dollars for vet fees. Um and a hundred dollars for my vehicle to be repaired. So that's uh. Almost eight hundred dollars of the uh nearly thirteen hundred dollars I receive monthly. Um I've had some problems with uh social services. They've been taking uh last year. Uh and into this year, they took out to almost two hundred dollars a month for something that I had no, I got no benefits out of it. I didn't want to do that. Um and I'm still trying to address that. So I'm having some difficulties financially. Um my outlook is good, but um. Oh, I uh recently was last summer, I made a deal with someone that I would clean out their trailer so they could use that trailer to transport things for moon days. Uh uh for the county. And now he's renamed on uh taking a trip to the dump. Okay, so here we go. Thank you kindly.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. Steve of Larnell asked that you talk to me after a meeting?
Sure.
Okay, any other public comments for people online that? Such void. Bless you.
No, thank you. Nice meeting.
Thanks for sticking it out with us. Um okay, seeing none, no further. Let's move on to uh marriage report. So this morning I had a really nice conversation with a reporter from K D M K. That is the radio station that is mostly based over in the Roaring Fork. And they go from marble on on one side, clear on up to Leadville. And they um. You may, if you are at the community dinner this summer, they actually were there too. They didn't have enough power to broadcast, but they're really excited to be there. And what they have told me is that they're they are really cognizant that Leadville is is one of their the recipients of um of. Of that, the the radio station's broadcast, and they want to be more, um they want to be more present and they want to represent Leadville more often. So they invited um us to participate in municipal matters, which is a like a monthly little report on various municipalities. Or leaders from various municipalities report um to uh K D M K um regarding whatever's going on in their town. So we had a really nice conversation. I said, yeah, absolutely, we'd be interested in in being being more present. You know, I know we're always trying to explore more ways to communicate with um with our constituents. And I I think radio is maybe one way that we haven't really done. So we're gonna try it. So as we encounter, as you know, I'll let you know when these get scheduled and let's make sure that we get on uh on the radio what we want, uh whatever message we want to each Friday. So that was pretty cool. Uh the other thing is that on January fifteenth, our new county commissioners will be sworn in. I have been speaking with the county manager about having, you know, kind of a a social gathering um. Uh like upstairs at Treeline with some appetizers and, you know, buy your own drinks, uh just to kind of get to know each other. And and to make sure that we are starting with really good, you know, communication, we can share phone numbers, we can just like, you know, like start fresh. Um and so they are doing, after they get sworn in, they're doing two weeks of what I've been calling Commissioner College. So they have a really, really rigorous schedule of, you know, getting trainings like we had, um meeting with all the different county departments, meeting with, you know, the city. Um and and so there's been some uh thought that maybe a social evening like the first week in February. So we don't like all of them have children. And so having like this full day of Commissioner College followed by nearly an hour and a half city. Um is is maybe a bit much to ask for people with families. So we were thinking maybe the first week in February. And what I am going to ask of you is please contact me if there are at or dates that just absolutely do not work. So we were thinking of like like four to five thirty or four thirty to to six um or something like that. So please let me know. Um for that first week of February, and I look forward to to starting a strong relationship with our our new partners at the county.
With five thirty that first Tuesday, so it's pretty good.
Then we can all, I was kind of hoping that it would progress from there and then people who chose to eat dinner, you know, could just go down there and eat dinner. But um boy, that would be an interesting meeting.
That transition.
Well, it's really great, isn't it?
Thank you for doing that, Ray's.
Yeah.
Ray's.
That that kind of outreach before this kind of a blank slate change is really important right now.
And uh one of the things that the county manager has suggested is that we, you know, schedule um possibly quarterly or, you know, maybe by little work sessions throughout the year. We we definitely want to do that. We kind of have to work out like, you know, it's always like all of us have day jobs. That's a full-time job. Like when and when can we, when can we schedule those without like adding more work for our own staff? Who who supports our meeting meetings? Um you know, like, I'm not really sure what the answer to that is yet, but that's kind of what we're wrestling with. But we are planning on regular, you know, right work sessions to just chat about like what's going down.
That would be.
I'm really, I'm really excited about um chapter. Um okay, that's all I got. Council reports?
I watched this as past one bedtime.
Totally. I don't think, did anybody guess this late?
Oh, I guess.
Yeah.
Which is odd, because usually you're our optimist, but the gavel can fall.
We need to be ready when we're back to the emergency shelter next week. I was going to ask Councilmember Best for to play on that, but it would be.
So we've we've um so again, with the C U P coming up, we have to be very conscious about what we hear ahead of time. Because that will, we have to really avoid predetermination there. Um so we're reaching out to Angler just to get a little guidance on that. But I think what it'll what will fall out is we will do the C U P and then we can hear anything with.
Okay. That's a moment.
Council member Hill?
It's just been up since.
So are you still?
Uh hey, uh I was just wondering, uh speaking of parties, are we gonna have a holiday party?
Have a holiday party. So um uh Bree Ortiz and I have been um trying to figure this out. We have a number of complicating things that have gotten in the way. Uh right now, I need to confirm it, but we are looking at Wednesday, December eighteenth. That's not a confirmation. Our earlier, this our earlier choice, uh we got closed out after a lot of it by somebody else, so.
Well, it's seventeen, there'll be a five-hour city council meeting.
Right, yeah, totally. Party after that and then box in that timeline.
Here we do it.
Um evening.
Evening.
Yep. Um family, family welcome.
Okay.
So look for that um Bree and I are meeting this uh this Friday to try to put the final pins in that. So I'll let you know as soon as possible. Please put, thank you for that question and. Let's put a pin in that, eh? Um. That's a good question. I think. You think that that would in that could engender a pretty detailed discussion?
That's kind of what I.
Time you want to avoid it. So just we have, we have no, no end of really interesting things in my back, but other council reports. Yeah. Okay, public meetings planner. Anything you want to add or subtract? December, please take note of the board December fifth. Yeah.
Yeah. And nothing on the tech, is that correct?
Um. And well, you know, now you had to mention it, so not nothing at this time. Um if if something does happen at that time, it would have to be.
I would as well.
And I'd have to maybe. Uh then it can't happen, so yes.
Okay, we'll just leave, we'll just say nothing on that hand. Okay. All right, final. Calling once, twice. All right, it is nine fifty-two. Holy cow.
I remember when you used to go to.
Thank you so much. Wait, which we.
Really? We had one meeting.
Blocked it out.
I don't let me. I can't often think about it. I mean, it's like.